City Council Successor Agency to Redevelopment Agency, City of San Carlos Meeting tonight, 7:00. Pledge of Allegiance, could I have the scouts leave the pledge please? That'd be great.
Please tell me say pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks guys. Okay, any changes to the order of the agenda?
No changes from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else from the deus? Okay, Mr. Rubens, report from closed session.
There's no report from closed session.
All right. Moving on, 5A, Presentation of Proclamation of two, okay, I'm gonna get this. Monjoit Chakraporti, okay, and Holman Torneau, with Boy Scout Troop 321, upon receiving their Eagle Scout Awards. So I've got some presentations for you. I practiced, I practiced that one. Okay, am I on? I'm on. I always enjoy doing this because I never got to be an Eagle Scout, but it was on my list, maybe, maybe, could I go back?
If you want.
Anyway, let me, let me start with, with what we've got here. Exactly. I'm not gonna read all the, all the whereas's, but a couple of them, I will. The Boy Scouts play a vital force in the lives of hundreds of boys and young men in the city of San Carlos who are guided by adult volunteers who have given generously of their time and talents. The leaders, believe me, I know, have given, I used to be a junior, years ago, I was a Junior Assistant Scout Master, and, and I even did some work on that, so. Monjoit did a service project, which was constructing and installing an outdoor kiosk to display trail maps at the entrance of Arguello Park in San Carlos, which is gonna obviously be very, very helpful and benefit to the community. And, obviously, he had to use his leadership skills to organize and inspire his team while planning and managing the project to completion. So, we'll go one by one here. Why don't you tell us where you go to school, and tell us a little bit about the project in detail?
Yes, so, I go to Cromwell High School. I'm in the class of 2017, so I'm graduating this year. And, a little bit about the project was, I noticed that the Arguello Park had a bunch of hiking trails that people could hike on, except not many people knew where they went, so that would not be as, it wouldn't advertise to them, a lot of people who want to, it wouldn't advertise to a lot of people who would want to potentially hike. So, as a result, I decided that a small kiosk, which contained a good amount of information to, to parkgoers, to see where the trailhead start and where they end up, and also if they had a little bit of information of what's going on at the park, that would be very beneficial to parkgoers and also the city to make sure that, like, everybody gets the information that they need. And, I had a lot of support with this project, including about 300 man-hours.
Wow.
Yeah.
Great.
And, thank you.
All right, thank you. So, I wanna make sure I, let's see, I sign this, and so this is yours?
Thank you.
Thank you. And our second gentleman, Holman Torneau, also obviously being an Eagle Scout, his service project, again, had to organize and inspire his team in managing and planning it. And, this one was a project restoring St. Charles School's science-building garden, which entailed removing the weeds and damaged dirt in the planter box, replacing the irrigation system, and planting new plants. And, obviously, that will be a wonderful addition to the school, where the young people can see the, the garden and everything like that. So, you wanna tell us where you go to school, and a couple of items about the project?
Sure. I go to University of Sarah High School in San Mateo, I'm a freshman. And, I mostly started with the project, my science teacher mentioned that she wanted to redo it, but never had the time. I was looking for an Eagle project, so I offered to take it up. And, I worked on the weekends after school with some of my friends from school and other scouts in my troop. And, we started by pulling the weeds, then we dug up all the dirt, well, most of the dirt, we didn't dig all the way down. And, we replaced the dirt with, with more fertile dirt so plants could grow, like the old garter where they would die. And, then we replanted some new plants that would attract bees and butterflies, so they could use it as an outdoor learning center for the 7th grade class. And, we ended up planting multiple plants and a bunch of different wildflowers that ended up growing really nicely, and ended up with about 250 man-hours total, so.
Super, thank you. Did you wanna get some camera, I'll do this, so here's your.
Let's do this.
I'm not good on staging here, so, we'll get you back up in a second, get some good pictures here. Sure. Great, congratulations. Both of you gentlemen. Thank you very much. Wait, there's more. Okay. We have another presentation. The week of May 21st to 27th, National Public Works Week in the city of San Carlos. So I guess Jay, you, you get this one? Why did I walk all that way? I'm gonna read some of these whereas's in this one. The public works services provided in the city of San Carlos are an integral part of our residents' everyday lives. The health, safety, and comfort of the community greatly depends on these facilities and services. The support of informed residents is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, storm drains, streets, parks, public buildings, and solid waste collection. And, the quality of these facilities, as well as their engineering, design, construction, and maintenance are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of San Carlos Public Works employees. Most residents don't even know what Public Works is or does until something goes wrong. Most don't appreciate the role Public Works plays in a developed nation like the United States. The continued support and encouragement of the city council greatly influences the results that have been attained by the quality, pardon me, by the qualified and dedicated employees of the San Carlos Public Works Department. And, since 1960, the United States has been resolute in supporting public works agencies across the country, recognizing the dedicated employees who largely go unnoticed by citizens because of the high quality and efficient performance of the public infrastructure. So, Jay, congratulations to all the folks, you yourself and your department, do all the work that literally no one knows about, and thank you very much. You wanna make some comments, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of city council. It's greatly appreciated, this recognition, once a year, because, again, as public works employees all over the United States, and especially in our city, as they do their job right, you don't really know that they're there. And, they were responding to all the rain and the storms that we had over the winter time. Anytime there's any kind of sewer issue, our public work staff is out there, they're handling things when there's problems on the streets and all kinds of things like that. And, one way to say thank you is something like this, and again, the recognition, the support, and the resources that you provide to us to be able to do our jobs, it makes for us being a very remarkable city, and I am greatly appreciative of that, and I will pass this on to our crew. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is for folks wishing to comment on any items that are not on the, the agenda this evening. I have one speaker card, David Tool.
Just one, huh?
Welcome, David.
Welcome, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name's Dave Tool. I own Tools Garage here in San Carlos. Tonight, I'm here representing the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce, where I serve as the first Vice President on its Board of Directors. I would like to thank the city council and city staff for a continued support of the San Carlos Chamber. Last week, members of the council and staff attended our spring trade show at Devil's Canyon Brewery, and our access San Carlos breakfast at Hiller Aviation Museum. The Chamber truly appreciates your attendance and support. The Chamber will be hosting some more events in the upcoming weeks that I would like to invite the council and staff to. On May 17th, we will be having a joint membership mixer with the Redwood City Chamber of Commerce. This mixer will be held at Dominico's Winery from 7, or from 5:00 to 7:00 PM on the 17th. And, due to popular demand, the Chamber of Commerce will also be holding another wine stroll. This summer version of our popular event will be held on June 11th from 1:00 to 5:00 on the 6 to 800 blocks of Laurel Street and the 11 to 1200 blocks of San Carlos Avenue. Tickets are on sale now at the Chamber's website. Thank you again for your support, and don't forget to come down to our weekly Farmers' Market every Sunday from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, David, very much.
And I'll also give a shout-out to Public Works, because we had an incident where somebody decided the middle of the street was the best place to dump furniture, and in one day, they were out, got it out of there, and good to go. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Dave, for coming, appreciate it. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on public comment for items not on the posted agenda? All right. The next item we have on our agenda is consent calendar. Those are usually items that are normal in nature and were approved by one motion. I'll listen for a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Griselli?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next item is reports to council. And I have a feeling we're gonna skip the first one.
Yeah, Mr. Walter just informed me that Rycology's doing a presentation beforehand in a neighboring city, and then they'll be coming straight here, so I think we'll just continue on with the agenda until they get here.
Absolutely, I know, they have double booked, I think, every night this week.
Yeah, they're trying to hit all the agencies.
With Rycology and with SBWMA, so. We'll skip 8A, we'll go to 8B, Report to the Council on League of California Cities Attorney Conference.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, as part of prior council interest, I'm providing you with this brief summary of some of the highlights of the City Attorney's Conference that was held in San Francisco this year, so I learned a little bit about what it's like to commute to San Francisco in the morning. But, that aside, you know, these conferences are very interesting and are a great opportunity to meet with city attorneys from all over the state, and this was a well-attended conference because of its location. It was actually the first time that they had ever held a conference in San Francisco. So, there's a couple of statutes and regulations that I thought would be of interest to the council. They deal with some of the reporting requirements that you have as public officials, and some of the meeting requirements. So, the gift limit, in case you haven't read that somewhere else, for 2017 is $470. It goes up with the cost of living every year, so what that means is you can accept in the aggregate gifts from any one source up to that amount, and you'd still have to report for amounts below that. And if you have any specific questions about that, I'd be glad to help. This is a new law, AB 1787, regarding public comment at, at city council meetings. So now, if one of the members of the public comes to comment, and we impose a time limit on the members of the public, if, if that member of the public requires a translation for their comment, we have to give them twice as much time as the ordinary time limit. So, in our case, we generally have a two-minute, so if we have someone who needs a translation, it would double that. AB 2257 was passed, passed last year, and beginning in 2019, there are some specific requirements about website design that will require that our agendas be basically one-click away from, you can't embed them in different menus or pop-up menus, it has to be right on the front splash page of your website and accessible in that way. Still, I read the law, and I, it leaves a lot to some interpretation, so we'll be working with the city's consultants and webmaster to make sure that we're in compliance with that. The last new law of note is SB 1436, which is sort of an aftermath of the Bell scandal. So now, specified executives, before the council acts on, takes final action on compensation, it now has, the compensation has to be announced at the public meeting before you make the final decision. And, that's only for executives, it's not for everyone.
I'm sorry, so the meeting before?
No, the same meeting.
Same meeting, okay.
Just before you take final action. And presumably, a public comment would need to be allowed after that announcement. There's some potential new laws that might be of, of interest. Assemblyman Moen has proposed a limitation on the local election contributions of $3,000 beginning in the 2019 year. It's still just, it's being monitored by the league right now, so I'm not sure if that's the final number or exactly what the final version of the bill will look like. And all of us Form 700 filers, which includes all the council and many of the staff in San Carlos, executive staff, they, right now, the Form 700 really hasn't been changed in a while, and it has very broad categories for reporting of economic interests. They're gonna broaden that to eight categories, starting at $2,000 to $25,000, and then going up to amounts over $10 million. The brackets start out pretty small, but then they go to, for example, from 100 to 250,000, 250 to 500, 500 to a million, a million to, to 5 million, 5 to 10 million. So, it'll make it more complicated and a little bit more homework for people to do their 700s. You know, I don't know how many people are gonna be in that 5 to 10 million or, or over 10 million for individual investments, but nonetheless, those categories will, will potentially be there. That's also being monitored. Some interesting cases, some of them I've already, the first one I've already reported to you on public records. Public records, the State Supreme Court ruled that just because a record is on a personal device, like a computer, or a laptop, or, or iPhone, or an iPad, or those types of devices, the records on them could still be considered public records. The Supreme Court offered some guidance in, in the case about how a local agency like San Carlos is supposed to deal with devices that are not in its possession. And, some of the, some of the solutions are not that cumbersome. We could have a rule in our policy that people need to sign, be willing to sign an affidavit about whether or not there are any public records on their device, and that would, that's one of the ways to satisfy the requirements. This is interesting, because we, the next case is San Jose Unified School District versus Santa Clara Office of Education. That case, we run into this once in a while when our local school district proposes a project, either the high school district or the elementary school district. Both of those districts have exempted themselves from our local zoning. So, in, in Santa Clara, the Santa Clara County Office of Education approved a charter school and attempted to declare itself exempt from local zoning so that the charter school could be placed in a zoning district that schools were not allowed. The 6th District Court held that the Government Code Section that, that deals with school districts being able to exempt themselves from zonings does not apply to County Office of Education. So, you have to actually be a school district, it actually says that in the statute, but I, so I think it was a little bit of a stretch that the Office of Education was trying to probably declare itself a school district for purposes of the statute, but, so, they were not able to place that charter school where they intended to. The next case I thought would be of some interest to the councils involves billboards. There was a person who was a private property owner who had a private billboard that had been in, in Santa Clarita for many years, turned it from a advertising, onsite advertising sign for a business to a billboard. He started selling advertising space on it. And, the local zoning in Santa Clarita did not allow for billboards, and so, and they had an amortization scheme, which is allowed in the State Outdoor Advertising Act. So, the city won in that case. Cities can have more stringent regulation of billboards than the state law allows, it's not a total preemption statute, which is what the proponents of the billboard were arguing. And I think that is a restatement of what I understood the law to be before, that many, San Carlos, for example, has banned, banned most billboards for its entire existence since 1925, and has very few exceptions. The next case that I thought was interesting involved referendums and the Brown Act. A town of Apple Valley was sued by some interested parties who were opposing a developer referendum that was being placed on the ballot by Walmart. It's, you may recall that the, the, excuse me, it was an initiative, initiative by, by developer, developer initiative, you might recall that a developer initiative can, if it passes, is exempt from SEQUES, so the project is allowed to go in as proposed in the, in the initiative, which is a form of legislation. It's a, a recent 2014 case clarified that that was the case. So, when they posted on the agenda the, the proposed initiative, the council went on to approve the initiative that was proposed at the council level to, and then they put, they went to put it on the ballot, but what they forgot to do on their agenda was point out that they had a separate MOU with Walmart, that Walmart would pay for the initiative election costs. And so, what happened was, the, the court said, yes, you can get around, you can get around the SEQUES requirements, but you violated the Brown Act, so you couldn't, you can't go forward with your election. So, I think that's, they, the court anticipated that the council would, would fix the, the Brown Act violation, which really wasn't that difficult to do, but they, so they ruled on the other parts of it, so they wouldn't have to come back again. There was a case late last year out of Culver City, where residents sued the city council for a Brown Act violation because they held a six-minute non-substantive discussion about whether to place a matter on a future agenda. They asked a few questions, they wanted to get clarification on, on what the purpose was, and ultimately, that's all they decided, and the court said that, nope, not a Brown Act violation, even though it was six minutes, there's no magic number, you can ask some basic questions about whether or not to put something on the agenda, but it did not, does not violate the Brown Act. Another case, another Brown Act case, I guess this was the year of the Brown Act cases, people are trying to figure out some of the nuances of that act, but this one also kinda makes sense. The city of St. Helena was sued by a member of the public because in a tele, an otherwise legal teleconference meeting where one member of the board was not at present, but all the other requirements were met, the connection was bad. So, the argument was that the person who was on the phone wasn't participating, or, and that the public couldn't participate because they couldn't hear everything that the, the person on the bad connection was saying. Again, not a Brown Act violation. The court said technical difficulties were contemplated by the legislature, I think, in teleconference meetings, those types of problems have existed ever since that part of the law was put in place.
Do you have some more?
I do, but I have plenty of time, I get, no, I could go on and on, there's a few more.
Can we go to the next item on the agenda, Mr. City Manager?
You can, and if you want, have any questions, contact me offline, Mr. Mayor.
Not that this wasn't interesting, but it sounds like you could go.
I was almost done, anyway.
Oh, I'm sorry, if you, we're almost done, I didn't mean to cut you off.
You want me to get the hook out?
I'm okay, I'm just. This is at your pleasure. I find it more interesting than, than the general public, probably, because I was there, and it was, involves the legal issues facing the city attorneys all over the state, but.
Anyway, thank you.
Those were the best ones, anyway.
Well, so much for the general public, that, that's gone now, so you took care of them, but anyway, thank you, Mr. Rubens, seriously, thank you, Mr. Rubens, I appreciate it. There are a lot of interesting stuff that things come up with. So, can we move to, can we move to a public hearing? All right, let's move to 9A, Consideration of Adopting Resolution Authorizing Adjustments to the Cost of Services Schedule User Fees for Fiscal 2017-18.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. Every spring, in conjunction with our budget review, the staff reviews the costs of providing services and recommends adjustments for council consideration. For the past four years, most fees have just been increased by CPI. This year, we decided we would do a comprehensive user fee study. This isn't an annual requirement, but the last one was done in May of 2013. So, since it's been several years, it felt like a good time to do a refresh. Two items to note are that fire fees have not been included as part of this study. Since we contract with Redwood City for fire services, for administrative purposes, we felt it made more sense to maintain the same fee schedule that they do. They have just completed their own overhead allocation and user fee study, and they are considering their updated fee study tonight at their council meeting. If adopted, we will bring the fire fee schedule back at a future meeting for your review and approval. Secondly, building fees have been proposed to increase only 2% this coming year. Over the last two decades, there's been a lot of debate over using the valuation method to charge for permits. An alternative would be to switch to a project scope, so charge based on the projects that are coming forward. We've discussed this idea, we'd like to look into it a little bit more, but that study is much more extensive and a larger effort than we had in this current project. So, to keep up with costs, we've just recommended a slight increase to our existing fees until we can do a thorough review of changing the methodology for building. So, Nicole Kissam from MBS is here, she will discuss the process in more detail, and then following her presentation, the departments and I are here to answer any specific questions you have.
Welcome, Nicole.
Thank you.
Welcome, Nicole.
Thank you, it's a pleasure to be here. I have about a 15-minute presentation, is that, is that doable for you guys?
Bar.
Okay, let me know if you want, if you have any questions, any way through, or if you want me to speed up or slow down, I'm all yours.
Saw what we did to the city attorney.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, purpose of the presentation is just to go, you know, touch on the main parts of the methodology we use in a user fee study, and, and review the highlights of the outcomes, which are on the first page of your staff report. So, the, the scope of any user fee study is basically to define the full cost of providing individually-based fees for service. So, that's the whole, that's the whole purpose of a user fee study. Technically, there is a difference between a user fee and a regulatory fee, but most important is that they're all required to be based on the cost of providing services. So, user fees are cost recovery opportunities, they are adopted and decided upon solely by the city council, and it's always good to clarify that we're absolutely not talking about development impact fees, fines, or taxes, or utility rates, all of which are very different from a user fee or a regulatory fee. When we do these fee studies, we follow the basic tenets of the California Constitution and any other government code sections that may help in defining how to establish user fees. They all basically say the same thing, for a fee to not be a tax, it must be limited to the estimated and reasonable cost of providing services. Now, 218 is down there as the last bullet, these are not 218 fees, they don't require a 218 process, but the principles of allocation and equitability are still applicable, in our opinion. So, the goals of the project basically are twofold. We want to understand the full cost, or the maximum fee amount, of providing each service, and then we want to use that information to set municipal fees accordingly. San Carlos is in the practice of doing this every three to five years, and so, most of the conversation here is about recalibrating and what's changed since the last study and so forth. So, why do we do this? Well, it's good to reduce subsidy whenever possible. Sometimes, there's more revenue available after a fee study for services that have been reduced or eliminated. This is all about fiscal sustainability and funding departments efficiently, and staying in communication about cost recovery and setting expectations for cost recovery. in communication about cost recovery and setting expectations for cost recovery. These are the departments that were included in the study. Rebecca talked about fire. This study also covered all administrative fees, planning and building fees, public works engineering fees, police fees, and certain fees in parks and recreation. And the study follows a defensible methodology that's been around in the state of California since the 70s. It complies with state laws and statutes, like I talked about. It looks at what the current service levels are, what the current organization is for providing services. It explores data available to validate those service levels. It shows the total estimated costs of providing services, and it goes into pricing recommendations, recommended fees and cost recovery policy. So those are really the issues that we're addressing in a user fee study. The actual approach starts with a review of the fee structure, so we like to find out what's working, what needs to change, what needs to be deleted, and so forth. It goes through a data collection process, a draft review, and reporting process. So getting down to the nuts and bolts of the study and what it is, the highlights by department. In administrative services, for clerk and finance, most of what we saw there is some elimination of fees where the documents are now available online. So we did eliminate some fees there, and we changed the copy charge from 25 cents to 10 cents. And then there are one or two fees on the finance schedule that are set by the state. So we wanted to point that out to you. For building, Rebecca touched on that in the introduction, and in planning, this is one of the departments with the most significant changes. So what you'll see in the recommendations is 100% cost recovery for all fees, except for the ones that you see listed here. And I think there might be some questions about that as we, when we conclude the presentation. And then we also added some fees. Restructured, reorganized the fee table so that it's easier to use, and it's clearer for how services are provided, and then a number of new fees were added. That's for planning. Public Works probably had the most change to their fee structure. The operations and the staffing has changed in Public Works quite a bit since the last study, and staff were really ready to create a fee structure that works for how they provide services. We separated city processing fees from consulting fees, so that makes it easier for the staff to set a service level for accepting, facilitating, reviewing plans, and gaining approval in that area. In Parks and Recreation, the biggest change there is that we helped the departments set their facility rental fees based on market, which is part of Proposition 26. The council already has a method for calculating program fees in place, and we looked more closely at permitting and approvals, like registration and so forth, and tournaments. We looked at the cost recovery of those types of fees. In Police, we basically went through and looked at which ones are capped by the state and evaluated the ones that were available, that had data available. So what data is in the study? That's often a question that we get asked. So the primary data that we use for a study is the adopted budget information, in this case, it's the 1718 budget. We collect time data for each fee item in the study, so we work through what should be included in a time estimate, what should the time data be include, what should the time data include, excuse me. We look at workload, so how many of each fee item are we doing within the last fiscal year? And then we also make sure that we have both the current fees and the recommended fees information reflected in our analysis. I think I've said estimated and reasonable cost, total cost, maximum cost, I've used those types of terms, so what does that mean? It's good to review. That total cost means all eligible costs for inclusion in a fee, that includes different types of direct and indirect costs. Direct costs are items that tie to the budget, such as salaries, benefits, services, and supplies. And indirect costs are pieces of types of activities that are overhead-related or citywide costs, such as finance, HR, city manager, et cetera. And then in the case of Public Works and Planning, you'll see a lot of pass-through costs for consult and review. So when we do a cost of service calculation at the fee level, it's very simple. The maximum fee amount is the total cost of providing service, and that comes down to the time to complete the service multiplied by a fully burdened hourly rate. That hourly rate includes all eligible costs, direct and indirect, and it works with the concept of productive and/or available and/or direct hours, there's many ways to say that. In this case, we calculated rates mostly by division or main activity provided, so they're what's called composite or blended rates. If you have any questions about that, I'm happy to answer. So now we're into the, what fee should we charge? We know what the maximum fee amount is, what should we charge? The pricing analysis, and this is just a guide that we provide. Usually, that decision is made as to the degree of private benefit received for the service request. And whenever we adopt a fee at less than 100% cost recovery, that amount cannot be recovered from another fee payer, it just requires a subsidy from a non-fee-related revenue source, most commonly the general fund. So this is probably the, this is the summary table here, the most important information in the study. This is the outcome by department and the outcome overall for the city. This is also on the first page of your staff report. The numbers in the estimated annual recommended fee revenue column only vary slightly from the staff report, because they do have a 2% increase on building fees. That's not reflected here. So if the council was to adopt fees at 100% and go from 3.65 million to 5.5 million, we would have a $1.4 million additional costs recovered for these services. But the pricing analysis of the recommended fees are coming in around 4.38 million, which is about a $730,000 increase, or $770,000 increase, if you look at your staff report. I would like to point out before concluding here that San Carlos is definitely on the high end of meeting best management practices for fee review and fee studies. So definitely on target for looking at this every three to five years. There's an annual increase mechanism in place, which is a CPI in between study years. There's been a master fee schedule in place every year, and it's easy to read. And also, I think the council and staff are in a good conversation about cost recovery policy and so forth. So that's my, I think that was 15 minutes. Thank you.
Talk to the city attorney, help him out. I see my wife wasn't on, so the joke didn't really go here. Mr. Johnson, you have a question?
I do. Thanks for the presentation. I reviewed the fee schedule today, and there were a couple of things that I had some concerns about. One was about the change in fees for somebody doing a home remodel. And I did the calculation here that RDRC review for first-floor addition, you're proposing to increase by 75%. For second-floor addition, you're proposing to increase by 110%. And if it's staff review, it would go up 57% for single-floor addition and 110% for a second-floor addition. So I'm wondering, can you, can someone provide some color as to why you're proposing such a dramatic fee increase?
Sure. So Rebecca, would you, who would you like to respond to that?
Good evening, Glora Russell, Senior Planner. So in the 2013 fee schedule, the single-family additions are falling into two different categories. New houses have a 75% cost recovery, and additions had a 50% cost recovery. So that's how it was structured in the previous fee schedule. With the current one, staff is recommending 100% cost recovery for the council's consideration, so that would be for new homes as well as for additions. So it's a little bit bigger increase for the additions than it is for the new homes. The other thing that comes into play when you're looking at sort of the percent increase that Councilmember Johnson pointed out is because staff has adjusted some of the hours that are associated with some of the projects. When we did this work that Nicole was talking about, we looked at the hours that were assigned to all of the different single-family home reviews, and actually reduced the hours that are associated with first-story additions, both at the staff level as well as at the RDRC level. So those are increased by a different factor, or a different percentage than the other ones, where the number of hours remain the same.
And so then, could you just talk briefly about, other than, hey, we think this is a best practice, or, you know, this is what our consultant has told us to do, what's the rationale that if, you know, somebody on my block who's got their house two years ago, and it was a 50% cost recovery, and now their house is at 100% cost recovery, what is the, what should I tell them?
I think that's probably a question for me. So first, before I start this story, I want to just give a little bit of special thanks to Rebecca, because over the last 10 years, she, through her specific dedicated hard work, has brought our fee schedule sort of out of the dark ages and into the 21st century, and we're getting there, but it's been a work in progress over these years. If you go back to the city council 15 to 20 years ago, cost recovery was very important to that council, they talked about it frequently, and it was a goal of the city. For whatever reason, and probably a lot of it has to do with reorganization and just changes to building and planning over that timeframe, you know, what we're finding is we've gotten away from that in building and planning. But the idea there is that the public really shouldn't be subsidizing somebody's addition or remodel. You know, you think of a homeowner, a property owner, as, you know, a owner, occupant, developer. They're developing their property. It's their home that they're developing, but they have a financial interest, and they'll have a financial gain down the road. So typically, you know, that's not something that necessarily you would want to be underwriting with general fund funding. However, there could be some reasons, policy reasons, for the council to consider that you might want to do that. Maybe you're wanting to see more change in the housing stock in your community, see people invest more in upgrading their homes, those might be some of the reasons you want to keep them down. Otherwise, typically, those types of fees are really seen as something that is, does not have a citywide benefit, but rather benefits that specific individual, those individuals living there.
Okay. Thank you. And then one final question for Nicole. So I understand you do these kinds of reports for a lot of different cities, is that right? So do you ever make any recommendations about how to, if you're having a big increase, say 100% increase in a particular fee, do you recommend you do that all at once? Do you recommend, do you phase it in, or do you not make a recommendation, and you're just really focused on really what should the ultimate fee be?
Phasing is one way to approach it. Typically, that direction will come from the staff, so if they, or the council, the council will say, can't bite this off all at once, we want to see it phased, and that could be for specific fees, or for a whole department, or for the whole structure. San Carlos is already pretty good on the cost recovery spectrum, so maybe that's why we didn't look at phasing in this case, but it is a common approach.
I totally understand that's a common approach, but do you provide professional advice on a strategy, or is that part of the report?
Usually, the phasing is used when there's a really large gap.
Which would be defined as?
Like going from 20% to 100%, or 15% to 100%.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Albert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Number of questions here, I'm not sure exactly which person should respond to them, so I'll just ask them, and you guys can figure that out. First off, roughly speaking, across the entire portion of the analysis, what portion of our costs that we're looking to reimburse are what I would think of as indirect, either overhead or allocated in some fashion to the pool, which we then allocate out to the fees?
I just want to make sure I understand the question all the way. So are you asking what portion on a department by department basis?
No, across the entire, my understanding from what you described is that there are a number of departments that actually do, let's call it billable work.
Yes, right.
And then there are other departments which do not do billable work, but support those first departments. What I'm asking is, how big is that pool of?
Overhead costs.
The overhead costs, right.
Sure. I don't have that number actually off the top of my head, but I can look it up.
Would you hazard a guess as to what it is? Is it 5%, 20%?
Approximately 8 to 10 million in allocated costs, I would have to take a look.
And, okay, 8 to 10 million, and the total, the total general fund budget, Jeff, is what, around 30? So that says that?
Yeah, but I'm not sure we're talking about apples and oranges here, because, and let me just interject in case I have this right, and I'm not sure I do, but if a fee's in one department, and you have direct costs from that department, but, you know, another department like Rebecca's department then becomes the indirect cost, I'm not sure if that's what you meant by indirect cost, but I suspect it might be how it's being interpreted, which is why she asked about department by department.
I have to admit, I'm not sure I understood what you just said. I mean, but basically, guys, what I'm trying to understand is, is if you're a member of the public, and you go into the planning department, and you're submitting plans to be reviewed, you certainly, you might not want to pay it, but you certainly would understand that I have to pay a fee associated with the time that the planning department is going to spend on that. It's a different question about whether I should pay for, for example, the payroll clerk who sees that the planning department people get paid, because the payroll clerk is going to be there doing their job regardless of whether I walk in the door or not. And that's what I'm trying to understand. And it may be that you don't know, you don't have to try and make it up here, but I would like to know that answer. Moving on, and this is something I, it may have been in the schedule, and I just don't remember it. The appeal fees, if somebody is appealing an RDRC decision or a planning commission decision, do we have a policy of if the appeal is granted, do we refund the fees? And I see Greg shaking his head, my next question is, would we be allowed to if we had wanted to have such a policy?
We do not have that in the policy, but the council does have the discretion, on a case-by-case basis, to waive fees for an appellant.
And I believe they have.
And you have in the past.
On a case-by-case basis. I'll just mention in passing, I've been thinking about this in terms of people who have appealed, I mean, arguably, the point of an appeal process is to say, hey, I think you need to take another look at something, which you might have discovered, you might have come to the conclusion you ultimately came to earlier on, and so why should the applicant bear the cost of that, if it turns out we're like, hey, you're right, we should have decided something differently? That's something we can talk about, when we actually get to how we want to go forward here. When you are finished with your analysis of looking at the percentage of time that those billable positions are spending on task, do you go back and test it against the totality of the actual work that's done, so that, for example, if we say that, okay, reviewing the plans for a single-family remodel usually takes two hours, I'm making these numbers up, and we know roughly how many a year are done, and, oh gee, when you multiply the numbers together, it turns out that we have just used up twice as many planning people as we actually have. That kind of thing happens sometimes in these complicated allocations.
Right, yes, that's an essential part of any fee study, that it's a self-contained or self-auditing analysis.
So you do go back to foot it out and see that it does, okay. I think I just had two other questions. In general, I know you said we're at the, you didn't say forefront, but we do a good job in terms of our methodology compared to other communities, we're at the higher end, I think you said. Do you happen to know roughly where we stand on, when you compare fees to fees, you know, like for getting the plans approved for a single-family home remodel? How do we stack up to other communities?
So that's an interesting question. The comparative survey in the report is Appendix B.
Okay.
And that survey is a very small part of the study, so to speak. It's a very high-level comparing one fee schedule to another fee schedule, and often those services and other agencies are called different things, or they're grouped differently. So we did not do a comparison on like a project type and size basis, such as what would be the total fees for a 10,000-square-foot commercial building, or a custom single-family home. That is not how the information is structured.
Okay. Yeah, and I know those kind of studies are difficult to do, for exactly the reasons you're talking about. The reason I ask is, my sense is, anecdotally, that if there is such, if you wanted to find such. to find such a spectrum, we are on the high end of the spectrum. And if anybody on staff would like to comment on that, saying, no, I disagree with that, or yes, I agree with it, I, I wouldn't mind hearing the response.
Well, my comment would be, to the extent that, that, you know, we do believe in cost recovery, and that we're trying to get to 100%, that staff is recommending 100%, then that, I think, by definition, puts us on the high end of the, of the scale.
Interestingly enough, Jeff, that also implies that unless other communities are asleep at the switch, they are actually deliberately choosing not to go to 100%.
Yeah, and, you know, one of the other factors, too, I think, is, you know, for many years now, and Chris can speak to this, the city's really put a lot of, a lot of time and energy, and it's been an important policy decision in the city council, to really do projects quickly, or as quickly as reasonably possible for folks in the community. So, you know, our turnaround rates are pretty good. We invest a lot of cost in doing it, which, you know, would also mean that you're, you're going to have higher fees associated with it. And the feedback that we get from people who have, you know, experienced projects in different communities is pretty good on that score. So, but, you know, another element of this is that if you have a high-quality service, it may cost more than a low-quality service that maybe takes six months longer.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Grokot?
Thank you. So I wanted to focus also on the design review fees, and I'd simply like to know what the hours are, and what the hourly rate is that's being applied here.
Okay. You can find that in Appendix A2.
Can you just tell me?
I can tell you, sure. Let's see, design review, single-family, so there's 9A through F. So for, the hourly rate for any service is $188 per hour. That's the full cost recovery hourly rate. And the hours for design review range from four up to 30, depending on the type of design review. So I can read them all to you if you like, or-
So they're from four to 30 hours?
Yeah, it just depends on the type of review. So, for example, a single-family new home, RDRC, is 30 hours. Single-family first-floor addition, RDRC, is 20 hours.
Let's stop there for a second. So if we're looking at first-floor addition, most of those, I would assume, are fairly Say, five to seven to maybe even 800 square feet, because exist, if, if we look at existing zoning and lot coverage allowance, you can't do much more than five to seven to maybe 800 square feet without going beyond setbacks, going beyond lot coverage, et cetera. Can you tell me what is being done when they're reviewing these? What are they looking at?
Using the single-family first-floor addition as the example, is that an example you'd like to use? So for RDRC, it's typically going to include some pre-application information, so we're usually going to have some conversations with people beyond just what's happening at the counter. The application intake itself, the, typically a site inspection for the planner to go out into the field, communication with the neighbors regarding anything that's come up on the project, generating the staff report, working internally with staff on any issues that may come up, presentation at the RDRC meeting itself, generation of all of the final forms and conditions of approval out back to the applicant, and then all of the correspondence internal and with the applicant during that process.
Okay, so let's compare that now to single-family first-floor addition, staff, which is about, looks to be about a third of the cost.
Yeah, so we've got single-family first-floor addition at the staff level at six hours. So that is actually one of the ones that staff reduced from the 2013 fee schedule, so we're recommending a reduction in two hours of that one. So a first-floor staff-level project is fairly routine, in terms of compliance with the development standards. It may require a site inspection or may not. It does not require a formal staff report. It does require, for example, letters of incompletion along the way, and then a formal approval letter with conditions and issuing that.
So six hours, and in that time, you're looking at what?
I'm sorry, I'm not following your question.
Tell me what you're doing in six hours.
Oh, I'm sorry, all those things that I, that I just said.
Can you tell me again?
Yes. Receiving the application, it may include going into the field and doing a site inspection, depending on the nature of the project. The plan review itself, typically one round, a letter of incompletion to the applicant, so the formal letter with the items that are missing on the plans and comments. Typically, a second round of review, and then an approval-
Story.
Uh huh.
Okay.
For staff levels, often a second round of review. The second round can be minor, though, that's pretty common. Not a lot of folks, unfortunately, are able to submit complete plans on the first round, so we do typically see a second round of review. Drafting the formal approval letter with the conditions of approval, and then the correspondence internally and with the applicant through that process.
Okay.
Anything else at this time?
That's enough for when we go to discussion. Thanks.
Okay, sure.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, my, I think my original question was answered, and that was, why is it so difficult to compare our fees with other cities? And what I get from that is that other cities have different ways of categorizing what gets done, and what, and what they charge for different things. So what's under one category may be in another category in the other city, so that's why it's hard to compare. Okay. The only other question I have is that, maybe this is obvious, but we're locking, we're looking at raising the fees, which is going to be, mean another 700,000-plus in fee income. Does that mean extra personnel? Does that, is that, when you talk about being able to speed up staff time, does that mean that we're actually going to use that money to hire more staff to get things done sooner?
That's using the existing staff.
Using existing staff?
Uh huh.
Okay. Then how does that extra income translate into, into speeding up the processing time?
It's, when we do the fee study, we reset the, the costs. So when we did the fee study in 2013, it was based on costs as of 2013, and then increased by a CPI over that period of time. So now we've reset the base to what our actual costs are, so looking at any changes in the departmental structure, and any other costs that have come into play.
So it's, basically, it's just to make sure that what we're budgeting for what we're doing is, is accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, and another way to look at it, Ron, is that over that period of time, as the, and you know, the council's put more resources into these departments, particularly in the area of communicating with folks about development projects and whatnot, and so you've, you've added that cost in, and now the fee study is catching up with how you've expanded, in some ways, those services.
Okay, so this is a public hearing. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Guys, see any hands going up? So I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close.
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Roll call?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mary Goslin?
Yes.
Okay. Gentlemen, what would you like to do?
We probably need a motion.
I entertain a motion, if you want to do that, sure.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2017 dash-
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. A resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos authorizing adjustments to the cost of services schedule, user fees for fiscal year 2017, 2018.
Is there a second? Well, I'll second it just to keep the thing moving, so, all right. Moved and seconded, discussion. Mr. Johnson?
So I'm, I think that we're being way too aggressive in terms of the speed at which we're raising fees. I'll say a couple things. I mean, I think the first is, you know, we're taking, what I, what I've seen in terms of what's been presented, and what was in the staff memo, and I know that a lot of work has gone into this, but it's a very organizational-centric view, which is, how much does it cost for us to perform these services, therefore, how much should we charge? But it doesn't really take into point of view the kind of customer perspective. And it's important to remember that we're effectively like a monopoly here. If you want to get your home remodeled, there's only one place you can go, and we essentially hold that customer hostage. I, I would be much more comfortable if we had sort of a maximum of a 5% or 10% increase, except in extraordinary circumstances, and that, you know, if the staff wanted to say why there were certain extraordinary circumstances, then we could talk about it. I think a 100% increase year-over-year is just way out of line from what we should, what expectation we should be setting for customers. The second thing I would say is, I sort of have a philosophical opposition to the idea of 100% cost recovery, and the reason is, it doesn't create any incentive for the staff to lower costs and to do things more efficiently. I know that the staff works very hard, and I know that the numbers that are being shown here are very sound, but if you're, if you're getting 100% cost recovery, you know, the natural inclination is to do things in a ways that, you know, continually slowly increase that cost. If we instead pegged it at 75%, I think there's a natural inclination from the top to say, hey, how can we do this a little bit cheaper, so that we can stay within our budget? So I, I don't really see, particularly for services where there's a lot of staff time, going to 100% cost recovery makes me uncomfortable for long-term efficiency. So I, I, my preference and my discussion to my colleagues here is, I think we should ask the staff, my preference would be to ask the staff to bring it back, and to not have anything that exceeds, say, a 5% or 10% year-over-year cost increase.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Grokot?
Well, I focused on the single-family, or, yeah, the single-family fees, because it's something that I deal with all the time in my work, and just for the education of my council members, $188 an hour, when it comes to the other side of the counter, which is the architects and designers who are coming in with these projects, that's out of line. Architects, you know, if you're a principal in a firm, you might charge $200 an hour, but the principal works on the project very little. The people that are doing the design and the drafting and that kind of work, they're not billing out at $188 an hour. I asked her about what exactly is being done. I know there's letters that have to go out and things like that, but on, and I focused on the single-family, single-story addition, because most of those are pretty doggone simple. You're checking setbacks, you don't have to check height limit, maybe you're checking lot coverage, you don't have to worry about FAR, because it doesn't apply. So planning-wise, on a single-story addition, very little to look at, in my opinion, and to spend six hours on it. I've always wondered why I bring in projects, quite frankly. Sometimes I bring in projects, and I have to tell the client what the fee is, and the fee that, that city's charging is pretty darn close to the fee that I'm charging, and I spent time designing the darn thing, meeting with the client, and going through the whole process. And it's a little uncomfortable to tell the client, here's your fee from the city, and here's my bill. Maybe I'm charging too little. I don't mean to make this personal, but I'm just looking at it from the perspective of somebody who works in this field, and, you know, and I, while we're not allowed, as architects and designers, to talk to each other about what fees we charge, because that would, you know, be monopolistic, but, you know, we have a, we have an understanding of what the market is. And all that said, I, I agree with Cameron. I don't think it should be 100% recovery, for one, and if we were not getting that recovery by a large measure, and we need to work towards that, then work towards it, but let's not do it 110% at a time. I don't think that's fair to the, to the people coming in. And the last thing I'll say about this, specifically with single-family, it's a little different than when you're looking at commercial, because it's a totally different market. You're dealing with homeowners that often are, you know, they have a limited budget, they're, I can tell you, the clients I meet these days, they've got a, they've got a limit, they tell me what the limit is going into it, how much they can spend, and, you know, you're talking about dealing with family budgets. You're not sitting in a boardroom in a corporation, talking about big dollars, and really, a project that's an investment for investors. That, that's not how single-family homes are looked at. Never mind, it is sort of an investment, but, you know, it's a little different thing. So, focusing on that part of it, I'd like to see it come back to us, as Cameron said, and, and have staff give that a harder look.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a number of concerns that are a little bit, I think, a little bit different in some regards to the comments that have been made already about the proposal here. For one thing, while I do appreciate, having done a number of these analyses myself, that is difficult to compare, the way different communities charge for stuff. I have done a number of those types of analyses in my private sector experience, and it's almost always possible to divine some pretty useful information out of them. Things aren't that different. I mean, you know, it's not like people build spaceships in Belmont and homes in San Carlos, and so the schedules don't match. I mean, they build homes in both places, and whatever they call them, they're effectively a process where you have to get a permit to build a house. So I, I, I believe that at least, and certainly when you look at a local basis, that we ought to be able to draw some comparison, and I'd like to see how we stack up to some of the other communities. I think in addition, you know, I brought up the issue of how much of these costs that we're recovering are, the result of allocations of overhead. And to me, that's a pretty significant issue. On a, from a cost incursion point of view, you know, I talked about the payroll clerk. The payroll clerk is going to be paid regardless of whether or not, you know, one person comes in to get a house approved in San Carlos, or 10 people come in to get a house approved by the planning staff. And so in that sense, it's not really appropriate to allocate out the payroll clerk's costs to the process of approving a project, because it's not a variable component to it, it's a fixed overhead cost. Now, you can go too far in that direction, and basically say, well, by that definition, then no overhead costs get allocated. But my sense is that we're allocating pretty much 100% of our overhead costs, and anything close to that, I just think is not appropriate. It's just not realistic, it doesn't reflect the economic reality. And then finally, probably the biggest issue for me is, over the course of this period of time where, where we've been raising fees, the city has also built up very large financial reserves. I mean, depending upon how you want to look at them, and when you look at them, at the end of last year, they were in excess of $20 million. And they've changed over the course of time. We have more money potentially coming in, you know, this year with the potential PG&E settlement. And while on the one hand, I don't want to use reserves to pay for ongoing costs, it concerns me to sort of continue to recover costs at a very high percentage rate when we're building up reserves that we haven't decided how we're going to use them to improve life in the community. Basically, you know, I don't know where it's going to stop. And so it, it makes me uncomfortable. I, I wouldn't mind recovering our, some realistic measure of our costs, but until we figure out what we're doing with all this excess financial capacity we're throwing off, I just feel bad about sticking it to people, you know, through whatever methodology we use. So I'd love to see this come back with some more work done on it, with some more information, and, you know, maybe I can wrap my mind around that last issue and, and support something, but what's here tonight, no, I can't support that.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, when I just did the math, it looks to me like it's about a 21% increase, a little bit more than 21% that we're, that we're coming up with. And I, normally, I don't question, you know, what staff comes up with, in terms of what they need to do to conduct the city's business, and that's, that doesn't really, doesn't usually concern me. But we're talking about a 21% increase, and then I have to justify that to people who- who call me and say, you raised your fees a lot. That, that makes it difficult for me to respond to it. When I look at this, yeah, it's prorated about 5% a year. If you go back four years, I know that we did it four years ago, but I'm wondering, and maybe Jeff, you can answer this, was it ever set to, the fee schedule ever set to any sort of an index, like cost of living or anything like that?
Yeah, there were minor adjustments made, you know, to the schedule over time, but, but no consideration relative to cost, relative to indexes or whatnot, but not relative to cost, the organization, the city. And that's what's being done now, a complete recalibration.
All right. So let's just assume for a moment that this passes in its current form tonight. Would there be a cost-of-living adjustment next year that would just go automatically into effect? Or would we have to approve that?
You'd have to approve that.
Okay. All right. So my thinking is, you know, I tend to agree that we ought to do a little bit more work on it, but I think that, that part of that discussion next time should be how we index it, to what index do we, you know, there are indexes, different indexes we can tie it to. But I want to find, I, I don't have a problem with getting to 100% of cost recovery, I just don't want to take it in this big a bite, and I think that's what, I think that's what we're, I think that's what we're trying to say at this point.
So do we have any specific, I mean, I'm trying to, because staff, we've talked a lot, but we haven't given a lot of specifics, and I don't know, I mean, we want to bring it back, it sounds like, but in what form does it want to be brought back? I mean, they can come, they can lower it, but it might not be enough for some people. So I guess I'm trying to get a little more specific so that staff isn't just going to be running around.
5% for me.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what was Cameron?
5%.
5%. Okay.
Any comments, or Mr. Grokot?
Actually, on some of these, I could go, you know, a little higher than, than 5%, but I think somewhere around there is, that neighborhood is reasonable.
Okay. Mr. Olbert?
I, with all due respect, I think picking any particular number like that out of the air is essentially completely arbitrary. What I'd rather see before I committed to something was, at the very least, how do we compare to other neighboring communities on a case-by-case basis? And separately, I'd like an answer to that question I raised about what portion of these costs overall are the result of allocating costs that I would argue we shouldn't be allocating for recovery.
Well, I can certainly understand how we might be able to get to the second one, but the first one, you're not advocating that we go through 600 lines by 10 different cities, are you?
No, but they, I would thank staff, I mean, well, I've done these kind of, you know, analogous kinds of analyses in the past. Typically, what you do is you pick a few high-profile things, high-profile because they're going up a lot, or because a lot of people use them, and you analyze those. It's the 80/20 rule.
I'm just trying to give staff some, because otherwise, we're just going to keep spinning wheels. Go ahead, yes.
If I may, actually, on these design review things, I think it would be helpful, staff might want to consider some other categories in there. I don't want to make this too complex, but, you know, when you're, if you're in a hillside overlay district, for instance, and you're doing a new home, you've got some issues there because you're dealing with a steep slope lot, and I know that you guys have to work harder at those. Also, you might consider something that's sort of a baseline, and then in addition to that, like a square foot cost, you know, because I say baseline because there's things you have to do, right? You know you have to send out a letter, you know, you have to look at, you know, four sheets of drawings and so forth, so there's sort of a baseline. But obviously, the larger the project, the more square footage, the more complex it is, it's reasonable, the more time, as opposed to just saying, well, on average, this is what we spend in time. That's not fair to the, to the client coming in with a small project paying the same rate as somebody who brings in, you know, they're both single-story additions, but one guy's got, you know, he's doing 200 square feet, and the other guy's adding 1,200 square feet. So those are two different things.
Mr. Collins, any comments?
Yeah, just, I don't want to micromanage it, but I would like us to, I'd like to see us get to a point where we have a goal to get to 100% cost recovery over a certain period of time. I don't know if that's two years, three years, four years. We get there eventually, but I just like to spread it out, and I have, I don't have the slightest idea how to adjust into each individual fee. That's, that's something that, you know, staff can work on.
If I may, to the chair, for what it's worth, I, while I think I understand what you're saying, Ron, I don't support that because of the notion of the payroll clerk thing I was talking about. Some of those costs that we are currently allocating really shouldn't be allocated to the tasks they're being allocated to, because they would, they would be incurred regardless. And so it's, you know, not fair to charge them to people, in my opinion.
So have we confused you enough?
No, I think we've got good feedback. I think we've worked with this.
I'm trying to give you as much as I, if we can, because otherwise, literally, it's going to be, you know, 400 pages.
I appreciate that. You know, we'll do the best we can. You know, I think probably the heaviest lift will be the city-to-city comparison, but looking at, you know, a few, you know, the more typical benchmark categories will, I think, give us a fighting chance to come up with something that's fairly apples-to-apples.
Okay. Do we have, do we have to have this done at a certain time before July 1st?
Well, to go into effect, it would have to be done, but it doesn't, I would guess that's not going to happen at this point, so. So there's, there's no drop-dead date.
Okay, there's no drop-dead.
It just means the fees won't coincide with the budget like they typically do.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? All right. Well, thank you very much, staff. We will then now.
Mr. Mayor, there's, because this was a public hearing, you could, and we've done this in the past, reopen the public hearing so that, and then continue it to a date.
All right.
If you, if you have a date, if you don't have a date, then just we'll renotice it.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think we have a date.
Would you still like a motion to?
No.
We don't, we don't need it. Okay. Thank you. All right. Let's go to Act 2, 8A, which is Presentation Update on the Franchise Agreement Negotiations Process for Recology. Mr. LaMariana? Oh, pardon me, Mr. Walter first, sorry.
That's okay. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Jay Walter, Public Works Director. Tonight, we have a presentation from the Executive Director of the SBWMA, and he's going to be talking to us about the status of the agreement extension for Recology. So I'll introduce you to Joe LaMariana.
Thank you so much. You need a, yes. Thank you, Jay. Okay. Appreciate that.
Welcome, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. So nice to see you, and staff, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Rubens, Madam Clerk. I'm very happy to be here tonight to discuss, give you an update on our negotiations with Recology. Starting from the beginning, I would like to mention that our current franchise agreement expires at the end of December of 2020. So in our current contract language, it says that the two parties will meet and confer in 2017, so that is what we have done. The reason why it's so far in the future is, if for some reason we can't come to an agreement during this, this period before now and the end of the year, it gives the agency and the member agencies the option to go out for an RFP. So there's a fair amount of time involved in both the RFP process itself, and if a contractor, a different contractor was selected, the special order of very specialized equipment, the implementation plan that associates with it, getting the team together, et cetera. So that's, that explains the timing of this. So this also concludes about a year-long process that the SBWMA Board has given staff and given a negotiating committee direction to come up with two things. The two deliverables are to come back with a proposed model franchise agreement language for a next term, and the second one is to deliver a cost proposal from Recology to provide those services. And the reason why we're talking to Recology in a sole-source parameter specifically is they've done, by all accounts, a very good job. We've done surveys of staff, we've done surveys of elected officials, we've reached out in a number of ways, and in every time, pardon me, in every time, they come back with very, very high marks, and in fact, the staff survey that we sent out to what we call our TAC members, our Technical Advisory Committee, the results indicated a 90% plus satisfaction rate, which, if you look at a business that has tens of thousands of points of service contact each and every day, that's an extraordinary number. So, so that's, that's where we are today. The Board, a year ago, put together a negotiation committee consisting of five very high-level senior staff members representing throughout the agency that have a lot of experience. The chair was, is Jim Porter, who is the Director of Public Works with the County of San Mateo. Melissa Stevenson Diaz is the City Manager of Redwood City. Larry Patterson is the City Manager of San Mateo. Apsin Ascoy is the Director of Public Works in Belmont, the town of Belmont, and Brenda Owen is the Finance Director in the, the town, or the city of East Palo Alto. So they tried to get a nice, balanced point of view throughout the discussions, and folks who are used to making large financial, large-scale financial decisions at a very high level, and understand the political ramifications to that process. I should also mention, before I go too long, that the entire scope of this process involves the entire collection and handling waste system of about $100 million a year. This component, the franchise with Recology, represents about 63% of that. So it's important to know and understand, there's another very large contract that we contract out at the San Carlos facility to South Bay Recycling, and then we also have standing contracts to handle and dispose of the waste material once it leaves the site. So this does not represent 100% of that. I should mention, during this process, we also included a very exhaustive review of Recology's operating costs. That was done by a company called Sloan-Vasquez, they're very well-known in the industry as being financial analysts. They did, they went in and checked down to the fixed asset list level, they checked the labor contracts, they, they were on-site for a number of weeks observing the operations, and they concluded, after almost a year of this complete study, they concluded that, that Recology was operating in a very cost-efficient manner that was consistent with industry standards. Their, their conclusion was they specifically operated within 5.5% of the numbers that they put together in their pro forma. And then we actually had that pro forma peer-reviewed and had a second layer of scrutiny on that, and that contractor's numbers came out at 1.8%. So you could call it roughly between 2% and 5% within the industry norm, and that tells us that they're operating at a very high level of efficiency. So we thought that that was a very important part of the, of the process. Obviously, I've been giving regular reviews and feedback to my, to the Board, the SBWMA Board, and Mayor Grace Elliott is currently serving as the Chair of our Board. So for the last four or five meetings, we've been getting lots of good updates in that. We also had a very in-depth contract franchise workshop last Thursday, and it was attended by about 45 people within the 12 member agencies staff. There were five, there were six elected officials there. We had a 100% turnout of our Technical Advisory Committee, I was very pleased with that. We're having a second one of those workshops, if you're interested, next Tuesday in Foster City at the Rec Center from 9:30 to 1:30. The slant will be the city attorneys, so we've got all 12 city attorneys have RSVP'd, they're coming, and we'll probably have a handful of elected officials there as well. So going through the, the terms, or the overview of the contract itself, we are not recommending any major changes to the core collection services. All the feedback we've gotten has been very, very positive. If you look at it on an industry-wide basis, we have a very, very robust and comprehensive scope of services, so we're not recommending any changes to that. There's a couple services that we're going to do some tweaks, they're still being offered, but they have, they have exceeded, in fact, significantly exceeded way beyond the RFP pro forma that was sent out, and the FACS Committee felt like the company needs to be properly compensated for that. In those two areas, they're, they're exceeding over 30% more than what the pro forma said. So there's a variety of other items here, I'm not going to go through each and every one, but you can take a look at some of the considerations that we had there. Getting into the contract terms itself, the original intention of the negotiation was to go into another 10-year agreement term, to look at what that would be. And I also should mention, it's not a brand-new contract, we're looking, the recommendation is to amend and restate the current agreement. That's a pretty important point. The reason why the 15-year recommendations came out of these discussions was specifically because there's an investment of almost $50 million of capital with a new fleet for the next term of the contract, and frankly, it just amortizes in a more attractive way over a 15-year period than it does over a 10-year period. We are also, we also have a, a term in there, excuse me, getting a little ahead of myself here. Yep, there we go. We also want to, we have a provision that we're recommending that when the new fleet gets, when there's that decision point for acquisition of the new fleet, we'll have a meet and confer moment in time there before the acquisition occurs, to make sure that we are at least considering the latest in fuel technology for alternative fuels, I should say. And that seems to be a very, that seems to be a very ever-moving subject. So when it comes to the financials, there are, there are a handful of options that we were looking for. As I said, we started with the 10-year, but the numbers were pretty extreme, and our goal is to get the lowest number possible. So if you go to the right-hand column and go all the way down to the rate year 2021, the, the Franchise Agreement Negotiating Committee is recommending what's called a 15-year roll forward. There's an estimation that the difference between the last year of the current contract, which is 2020, and the first year of a proposed new contract, the difference would be 10.2%. A lot of that is directly due, there's a CPI component that any contractor would deal with. There's also all the new capital that's involved in there, so that's a big part of it.
Through the chair.
Apologies for interrupting. I actually, Joe, I don't understand this chart at all.
Okay. All right. We'll start back up. Mr. Grokot had a question on something before, so go ahead. I was trying to wait till the end, but, okay, go ahead.
However you would like to proceed.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
So if you could go back one slide first?
Sure.
And we'll get to you right after this one, Mark.
Oh, there we go.
So on the extension?
Yes.
That's being decided by the?
By you.
By us.
You. Yeah.
Okay.
The process, Councilmember Grokot, is that the SBWMA Board would vote to accept the findings and recommendations of the negotiating committee at the May meeting, proposed at the May meeting, could go into June, it could roll. And then presumably, when the SBWMA Board, it's much like the rates, so once they accept it, then it comes back out at the local level to each one of the 12 agencies, and two steps occur there. The first one would probably be in the June-July section or time period, which would have you accept the SBWMA findings and recommendations, and then that would allow you to enter into conversation and direct negotiations with the Recology team for your own individual franchise agreement. And the idea would be that we would have at least eight of the 12 member agencies with fully executed contracts by the end of this calendar year.
But Joe, are you, are you saying that the cities can take a 10 if the, if the, if the agreement's for 15?
No, I'm not.
See, that's what his question was, I think, right?
Yeah, that's the right question.
I missed that.
Yeah. So the Board is going to vote.
Right.
If there's eight out of 12 who agree.
Correct.
On this, whether 10 or 15.
Correct.
That's locked in, 10 or 15. But then we each get to decide some of the nuances of our own contract. But the term is going to be fixed before it comes to us.
That is correct. And let me be clear on that. The reason why that's critically important is there's a decision point to be made on the equipment and the depreciation of the equipment, and it's really, it's a noticeable favorable difference to do it over the longer term. It's, it's like taking a mortgage out over a longer period of time.
My, you know, if I were standing in front of the Board right now and making a recommendation to them about what, which choice they should do, it would be, you know, 10 years with either a 12-month, you know, extension, or the five-year. So you, you could possibly get to that 15, but there's an incentive for y'all to do, you know, a bang-up job and stay right and everything, to get that 15, which you want because of your amortization. I understand that, but having something in there that's a little bit of a carrot out there for you to go for.
Understood. And if I could clarify what those two extension? And if I could clarify what those two extension, the intention of those two elements are. The 12-year, excuse me, the 12-month term is at the agency's choice. And that is really, if you were to have a, come up to the end of the term and you needed an extra year to put together an RFP, at that point, you almost would go out to RFP. I couldn't imagine it not. And you just need a little bit more time to do it. So that's at the agency's sole discretion, and you being a member of the agency will give us direction through the sitting board member. The five-year term is not. That's different. That's a simple term extension at the bequest of the member agencies. And that's the incentive I think you might have been referring to.
Yeah.
Understood. So, and I'm sorry, there was a second question?
On the next slide.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sure.
Next slide. And I apologize for interrupting. I just literally, you were about to move on.
I'd rather hear it.
Please explain to me, how do I read this? Option 10-year, 2020, minus 7%, 2021, 24.9%. What does that mean?
It's a very reasonable question, Councilmember Olver. So again, we were first looking at a 10-year. And if you look at the number in the right-hand column, that's a really large number. That's what it looks like when you depreciate that over a shorter period of time. That gave us some heartburn. We weren't excited about that as an option. Let me explain what the minus 7% is. There's a fluky scenario in this where any contract that I've been involved in in my 25-year career has typically had all of the appreciation depreciate out over a 10-year period. In this particular contract, it depreciates over a nine-year term. And there doesn't seem to be the institutional memory to understand why that is. You can have your own conclusions to that, but the bottom line is in rate year 2020, the fleet is completely depreciated out. So normally, there'd be another $4 million worth of depreciation and interest that would be recognized and loaded onto the rate-making math. Well, that's gone, and that's what the minus 7% represents. So it's odd.
Thank you. I think I understand that now. One last sort of question. So if I look at just one of these rows, say the 10-year one, 2020, 2021. So there's a 7% drop estimated to occur, forecast to occur in 2020 because of this. We are, hey, we already depreciated all the vehicles.
The anomaly, yeah.
Right, that anomaly. So the expectation is on that first line that costs would drop 7% going into 2020 and then go up 24.9% from the 2020 level? So each one is incremental?
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
So, you know, the whole...
So in other words, part of the reason the 24.9 is as large as it is is because 2020 is anomalously low.
That's spot on. Spot on. And I admit, it's a challenge absorbing this, but you have it. That's exactly right. So we're trying to use that minus 7% to our advantage in this case and essentially try to buy down that number to make it as painless and smooth as the transition will allow us to do. And so basically, if you look at the two numbers associated with the 10-year, both the straight-line 10-year and the 10-year roll-forward, and by the way, the roll-forward part, that's the part of using that 7% forward. That's the roll-forward part. So I need to be clear on that. If you look at the 10-years, those are really large numbers. We don't want really large numbers. We want to try to bring it down. So the most attractive option up there is the 15-year roll-forward. And that also includes the 2.4% of normal CPI that would be recognized by any contractor there. I really want to make a point to call out the two notes at the bottom. We are trying to have the lowest possible number, but we want to be very forthright about it. There's two other adjustments that would occur on top of the estimated slash projected number, which right now is 10.2. Fuel index. So in the last five years, the fuel index has had extraordinary drops and spikes and lows in it. And so the committee actually did a timeout, and they said, let's not even project that right now. Let's use the 2019 and 2020 real actual numbers, and we'll apply that in 2021. So that's what the fuel index add-on would be. The second item is a very important item, and that was a running part of our discussion throughout this entire six-month negotiation with Recology. And that is the extreme growth that's been going on in the Peninsula has definitely affected them in a negative way from a profitability standpoint. The current contract is a fixed-cost contract, and it might surprise you to hear that they're not made whole in the servicing of a lot of these new facilities. Facebook is the poster child of that discussion. They're almost like a 13th city in terms of the size of it. So there are now provisions in there to adjust that on a three-year rolling average so we don't have a huge spike, and we can smooth out any sort of increases. And the other thing that's notable about that is the towns and cities, the member agencies, that realize the growth will be the ones that will also recoup not only the expenses from that growth, they'll do it directly. We have a very challenging allocation method in which we assign these types of things, and we're simplifying that. And so the agencies that realize the growth will pay directly for that, but also remember, they'll be getting new revenues from that as well. If there's, you know, we're surrounded by some terrific buildings here. I work right across the plaza, and, you know, we see the growth that's happening right here in our town. So there'll be revenues that should offset part of that. But again, it's beyond that number, and I want to, I definitely want to call that out. Another way to look at this, this slide gives a snapshot of where Recology's actual costs to date and projected costs, excuse me, it's the second time tonight I've given this. It's catching up with me a little bit. And from the projected costs for the remainder of the contract. And you can see the line itself, the golden rule, so to speak, represents CPI, and the bars represent their actual cost. And because the bars are below the CPI, the company's actually operating below that. And from a fixed-cost, cost-control standpoint, it's been very beneficial to the ratepayers. We also call out the 10.2, and that would still be below the projection line, the trend line for the CPI. So just another way to look at it. So from a compensation standpoint, there's a number of things. I'm not going to go through each one of these, but the one that I would like to call out to you, too, that I'll call out. We are recommending that we use local indices for CPI adjustments. We've been using national indices, and frankly, it doesn't seem reasonable based on the costs that we know and deal with here in the Bay Area. So the recommendation includes a transference to regional indices. And there's also a five-year cap each rate year that would be put on the contractor's compensation.
5% cap.
5%, yes.
Yeah, but you said something else, so go ahead.
I'm sorry.
That's right.
5% cap, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the idea would be, if it exceeds 5%, it is still money due to the contractor, but it would roll to the next rate year. And again, very specifically to smooth out the rate-setting process. And over a period of time, you would have a much smoother effect of market variables there. So that's quite notable. This slide, just real quick, is another way to demonstrate what it might look like with the compensation adjustments. So up through 2020, you're really talking about a CPI-based rate year, the difference between '20 and '21, the 10.2, plus fuel, plus growth. And from rate year 2022 and beyond, they would have the 5% cap, plus CPI and growth. That would be true of both of those.
So, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So I was just going to say, if for some reason there's multiple years that that number starts building and it becomes problematic, we have a meet-and-confer clause in the new language that we're recommending that would have the two parties get together and work some kind of a solution out so that we're not left at the end of the contract with an extreme situation. Those of us who were here during the last contract changeover remember that there were some very large buyout numbers with Allied Waste as a left. I don't know if San Carlos had that, but several of the member agencies had some really big numbers there, so.
I had a quick question.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Could you go back to the other? So let's assume that the fuel index goes down 1% in one some year, and the growth adjustments go up 2%. So you net those?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Once a year, we do a snapshot of the, excuse me, the company does a snapshot of the operations. They aggregate their projected costs for the next year, and that tends to average itself out. And then they make their case, and it gets vetted and reviewed. So, there we go. So some of the benefits of the negotiated offer, and they're significant, so I do want to point them out. You know, it's not to be understated. We want to have consistency with the current scope of services. Again, those of us who went through the last service changeover know it was an extraordinary effort. I think Recology did a very good job with it, but I don't think there's many folks, you know, we're about halfway through our presentations now, and everybody that we've presented to seems to have a very, very positive feedback from Recology's effort for the service transition. And I haven't heard anyone who has a real desire to do that again, for lack of a better word. So we've also put in a lot of measures for rate stability and predictability. I do want to mention, we did do a rate survey last year that demonstrates that the aggregated rates for the SBWMA service area are below the median for 60 local Bay Area cities. So we are in line with the marketplace. It's another indication that this is a good contract moving forward. We want to maintain the collection efficiencies. If we were to choose to go out to bin, and we could, or to RFP it, we would not get the benefit of that 15-year roll-forward. That is unique and specific to Recology. Another benefit that we would not get is all of the bins and containers. I think they put out 400,000 carts last time, and there were several thousand bins for businesses. All of that would be new money, new capital that would have to be factored into the new math. So there's definitely an advantage for us keeping that. The other thing I want to point out is during the negotiations, there was about $2 million that Recology offered up in concessions here. And that's notable. It's a notable amount, and I want to call that out. They also take on some inflation risk with their labor contracts coming up and some other nuances moving forward. And speaking of labor, Recology has a reputation in the market of being a good company to work with in terms of labor, and that continuity, we feel, would transcend by keeping them there. And then the last item is just from a dollars and cents standpoint, we estimate there'd be $2 to $3 million of cost avoidance for the actual physical act of hiring contractors to execute the RFP process and bring it back, evaluate, select, and a bunch of transitional costs. So final slide, the last steps. We're now in number two, the city council meetings. As I said, this is our sixth one that we've done. The feedback has been very positive from the other city council meetings. We will be presenting for action at the next May 25 SBWMA Board meeting, including some discussion on your feedback. And I've already mentioned the last two steps, that assuming that happens in the affirmative, the member agencies would then accept the SBWMA's findings and recommendations, and then we'd go into member agency negotiations. And I do want to offer up my services, our staff services, to support you in those discussions. We feel that that would be a very important part of the process to give you and your staff the very important context to have discussions. And just a closing thought, the model agreement and the costs associated represent the base core services that are realized by all 12 member agencies. And agencies are free to negotiate beyond that if there's a special need that you anticipate having. Some agencies have a real problem with abandoned waste. There's probably five agencies that will probably, will take a leadership role and get them together and have some commonality. I don't think San Carlos is one of those. You're very lucky about that. But there are others that are really getting slammed with that. And for Recology to provide the service at the level that's being asked, there needs to be proper compensation for that because it's way beyond what was originally spec. So that's an example. So that's it. I'll be happy to take any further questions, Mr. Mayor.
Before we get to questions, Mr. Kelly, do you have anything that you want to add? You don't have to. You're just available. Mike Kelly, the Vice President, I think it's Vice President's title? No? Just General Manager? Okay. Go ahead.
I have a question.
Great. Thank you. That's fine. That's fine. Just, you're available. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Grokot?
Couple of questions that I have. One is, we had gotten, I think this relates to this whole deal here. Got an email from, I don't know, some organization that talks about 51% of landfill-bound waste is compostable. And I'm wondering, system-wide, what it is for us and what we're doing? Is there anything we need to change to make use of that? Because that seems to be the trend in the industry, is make sure you grab that stuff, actually compost it, use it for any number of things.
The short answer is lots, and yes. There is a very high, almost 40% are the numbers I've seen statewide, and those track locally with us, with the material is compostable material. There's two primary pieces of legislation that just came out that forces the issue. It's not optional anymore. We will be recycling even more. Right now, we recycle, at the San Carlos facility, we recycle about, or we handle about half a million tons of waste material a year. Half a million tons. It's a lot of tons. Of that amount, about 38,000 are organic materials. That number needs to be significantly higher from that. So we have some things in our long-range plan that we are looking at equipment and technology and process to sort and handle that equipment. In the short term, we're working very closely, and Recology really has made their mark in this area, quite notably speaking. So they're working to maximize the programs that we do have today with the commercial sector in particular. Residential are doing terrific, actually, I might add. It's really the commercial sector and the multifamily businesses that really have an opportunity to improve. So we're working closely with them. So we're trying to match the two together, and we'll probably be, not probably, we will be doing a report out to you in the future on that in the next couple of years.
So just to follow up on that, then, would I, make sure I, understanding what I'm hearing, both at the plant level, meaning over there across the freeway?
The material, right.
And then at the customer level, working with customers of, like, say, multifamily, where, you know, something that's compostable, that's put in, say, the black can, so it's treated just like everyday trash, being able to extract that and put it where it should go. You're hitting it from both angles, or?
Yes. You're referring to either source-separated or an all-in-one sort of a process. We have plans on the books and programs in place now for the source-separated. And the plans in the books involve, if you've ever been over and seen the recycling center with all the Willy Wonka-style equipment there, we have some plans on the books for a slightly smaller scale in the transfer station to handle exactly that, to go through the stuff that goes in the black carts and the gray bins, which is garbage, and recover the organic material that's still not being captured right now. Pull it out and reduce the amount of material at our landfills.
Good.
Yeah. It's a major initiative. Major, major. Yeah.
And then one other question.
Sure.
If you remember, I raised the issue about, with our city, we don't pay the fee for our own garbage pickup. It's wrapped up. And you, I think you're the one that told me, well, that's because that's the way the franchise agreement is written. So is this the time to comment on that and say, at least from my perspective, I'd like to get that unwritten? And, you know, we pay our own bills.
Yes, this is the time. It will be a majority rules kind of thing, and I have the general sense that, I don't hear that from other folks, but I respect your comments.
Yeah. Actually, I don't think a lot of folks know that that's going on, so, you know.
Okay. I can certainly, I will insert it in the discussion when I present to our board on the 25th. I will make a point of bringing that up. That's the time and place.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Ms. Olver? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Joe. Number of questions, if we can, we'll just sort of go through them. Let's start with the simplest one on your third, slide number three, core collection services, no changes. We've had discussions on occasion over the years about, with the element of our population that's aging and therefore generating less trash because there's less people living in a home or whatnot, to think about trying to do things where multiple homeowners might be able to share what amounts to an account, okay? A cart. Was something like that at all considered or discussed during the negotiation processes? I don't think we're unique that way. Sematile County, actually, the 85-year-old population is the largest, the fastest-growing population segment in the county.
The answer to your question is no. There have been a lot of things discussed at a lot of levels, and I don't remember that being one of them specifically. And part of that is driven by the state rule that requires weekly service at each account. So that would, to my understanding, would require us to push back up at the state level and change the public health laws.
Actually... Actually, I don't think so because what it would amount to is two homes sharing one cart.
So, they would still have the weekly service?
Yes.
Well, again, the answer is no, we didn't touch on it, but I...
Is that something that an individual agency could discuss as a tweak to the contractor? Or is that so fundamental that it couldn't be done?
I know, well, I'm going to look at Mr. Rubens. I'll pivot over here to chime in on this, but while he's gathering his thoughts, I can tell you that the company previously and currently has made a certain base set of assumptions for operations. And with those assumptions comes the costs associated with that. And this would be a bit unknown. I'm not saying we couldn't do it or couldn't try it. I don't know if that would be, at the local level, something that you could do. I honestly don't know the answer, and I'm writing that down so I can consult with our attorney as well.
That's fair enough.
Mr. Rubens, did you have a thought?
I think that's something I would need to look into also, but I know that our current ordinance requires all residences to have service, and that's part of a model ordinance. And I'm not sure if the source of that is state law requirements, or if it's something that we locally or regionally have decided was a good policy.
Under my idea, they would all still have service. It's just...
Well, everybody has to have their individual service, but, you know, we'll look into that. I think that's a valid point.
The next question was, one of the things that has confused the heck out of every resident who's ever talked to me about the way in which rates get set, has to do with the multi-year process by which, you know, there's sort of tentative estimates of what, whether there's been too much money collected or too little, and then it rolls forward a year, and then, like, you know, five years down the road, it finally says, okay, now it's set in concrete. Is that process still going to be present in the new contract?
Again, short answer is yes, but there is some streamlining to it. I don't think we're ever going to completely get away from it. What Councilmember Olber is referring to is we typically have a three-year rolling process. There's the rate year prior where we have 100% of the actual information available. Then we do a projection. We do a year-to-date for the current year and a projection for the rest of that year. Again, the company does a snapshot in April and May, and when they do that snapshot, they have actual numbers until April or May. And then they project out what that's going to look like for the rest of the year. So, you have a year of actual, you have a year that's a hybrid, and then you have a projected number for the next rate year. And what you're talking about is the, what I think you're talking about is the challenges where you have to go back and double-check on the second year and the third year, the current year that has the projection and the projected year, to make sure you were on target or not, and make the adjustment accordingly. So, to be fair and to be right, if you've over-collected the money, you need to factor that back in and give it back to the ratepayers. And if you've under-collected, you have to make that adjustment, too. Yeah.
I'll just mention in passing...
It's complex.
It's complex. And despite having served on the SBWMA board for some period of time, several years ago, it's never been clear to me why we have that structure. Rather than debate it tonight, I would actually like to meet with you personally about that, try and understand that because it really makes life much more complicated than otherwise.
It is challenging. Yes.
The, let's see. You made a comment when you were doing the presentation that one of the other changes that's here is that when there is significant growth in a particular community, that, I think the word you used, that they will bear the costs of the growth. The part I didn't understand is, I thought the way the existing contract worked is if there was significant growth in a community, obviously, the cost to collect, all the sort of system-wide costs of collecting garbage went up because there had to be more route hours and whatnot. And that effectively, they were bearing the increased cost already. So, I don't understand what the change is.
Yeah. The way the math works, my understanding is that they are made whole for a portion of that, but not all of that. And so, for the part that is not all of that, I mean, we can have that same discussion when you comment if you like.
Yeah. I would like to respond. That's news to me. I never heard that.
But there is a gap. There's a number of, I mean, I think what's happening is, the contract was written between 2007, when it went out for an RFP, then, excuse me, the RFP was done in 2007, 2008, and the contract was actually written and the terms were agreed to between 2009 and 2010, and it started January 1st of 2011. So, during that window of time, we were at the absolute depth of the Great Recession. And so, now, I don't think it was contemplated that we'd be seeing this kind of massive growth here. So, now, because it's a fixed-cost contract, they are held to a certain standard on that, and there is a portion of that that they are eating. So, we need to move forward in a way that acknowledges that. And we also have, at the same time, we're making an alignment to the allocation process because the way the ratemaking works, and I know this is very exciting, ratemaking is nothing but the best, isn't it? The company makes a projection for their gross amount of operating costs that they intend to use, and they price that out. That's the large amount. And then what happens is, it gets allocated out individually on a prorated basis. So, we're taking a more streamlined effect because with the old method, you could actually have no change and do nothing, and your allocation could actually increase, and that didn't seem quite fair. So, when I worked at the county for 10 years as a solid waste manager, solid waste and environmental services manager, I had to go to the podium and explain to my constituents, my ratepayers in North Fair Oaks and in a variety of county pockets, why the rates went up. And part of that story was the allocation change, but we didn't have any change. It was somebody else over here, and it rippled back, and it was really frustrating.
That I'm familiar with. Could you put up the chart you showed of the Recology's financial performance versus CPI? I apologize, I don't know what page number it is.
Oops. Going the wrong way. Pardon me. One more.
That's it. So, and maybe I misheard you. I thought at one point you said that, basically, communities were benefiting in part because of the gap in the current timeframe between the bars and the line. And my understanding, actually, I didn't think that was the case. I thought the way this worked is, kind of what you were saying a minute ago, early on, when the contract was first adopted, Recology was incurring greater costs than they were being paid. They are now being paid because we pay on the line, not on the bars.
Well...
At least, that was my understanding.
Yeah. A great distinction, and I do welcome the questions. These are very good questions. I commend you for that. So, if I could point out, in rate year 2013, you noticed that it's above the line.
Right.
There was a one-time mutually agreed, a mutually, contractually-agreed true-up, and that was very specifically because both parties, both the agency and member agencies and the company, had access to data that we didn't have a high level of confidence in. And it was borne out, once they had the first two rate years, there were something like 3,000 new accounts that weren't even on the books, you know, that kind of stuff. So, we made a one-time adjustment, and that kind of skews it there. Moving forward, here's one of the things that I always try to get my head around. Two things. One is, we were basing it on a national indices standard, which doesn't properly reflect locally. And then, secondly, it was based on an 80% recovery of those standards. So, every year that goes by, they're falling a little bit further and further behind just by definition, and that really didn't seem right. I mean, from where I'm sitting and from the negotiating team's standpoint, the purpose of a CPI-based, fixed-base contract is to maintain, you know, your contractor's performance within the marketplace. So, we're certainly getting closer by 2021, and it's expected that it would track, the two, in a perfect world, would track with each other. So...
We can add this to our list of things that we're going to talk about offline because I'm not terribly comfortable with what you just said.
Okay.
The, I think it's the next slide, compensation highlights. Could you talk to me a little bit more about that second to the last bullet point, annual 5% cap on contractors' compensation?
Sure.
And I understand the basic concept behind it, but my concern is, there could be scenarios where that cap gets brought into play for multiple years, and you said that things just get rolled forward. So, what happens? It just rolls forward forever to the end of the contract, or...
No. If the number, currently, and I want to emphasize this, in the recommendations, if that number ever hits 10%, there's a contractual requirement for the parties, the contractor and the agency, to meet and confer and figure out a way to deal with this.
Oh, and basically, it doesn't define what the adjustment is, but the concept is, hey, the world, there's been another war in the Middle East and oil prices are $200 a barrel, right? And we have to make an adjustment. Okay, fine. That makes me feel better.
And that would eventually roll back to you in the form of your representation at our board.
Well, we have a number of things to talk about offline, but that's my question.
Be happy to do so.
So, I have a question for city manager. So, we are a member. I am the representative. What is your thought process for how this is going to come down on our level here? I assume next meeting, we're going to vote to, whether we're going to go or not go, so I'll have direction, or I just get to choose, or flip a coin, or...
I'll go with you.
Yeah.
Are you talking about specifically the...
What we're looking at, we're looking at the May...
Council's direction to you on how to vote?
Yes, because we're looking at May to have the board meeting, the SBWMA board meeting, and vote on whether to approve it or not. So, I'm just trying to understand if you had a thought process of how this was going to happen on our level, because I may have an opinion, he may have a different opinion, Mark may have a third opinion.
Right. Well, and I think this is the opportunity to get a sense of the council.
Okay.
You know, in the past, the council has not directed its board member to vote any specific way.
Okay.
That I'm aware of. So, if the council has that desire, then certainly we could agendize that vote for you.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure that...
This is, you know, this is a report to council, so it's not agendized for council action.
So, I understand that. I realize that, but I just didn't know if questions are going to be raised, and if we don't talk about it in the next meeting, I'm just going to go and vote. And, you know, the council could be saying, "Good job," or, you know, "Want my head on a skewer," so...
If I may.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I think you raised a really good point. You may remember when I was on the SBWMA board, initially, I brought back, sort of asking the same question, and stopped doing it because I could sort of tell from the looks I was getting, it's almost like, fine, whatever you think.
I understand.
But the difference is, we're talking about here entering into a 15-year contract.
That's why I'm bringing it up. Otherwise, I would have kept my mouth shut.
I would. My personal advice to you is, I would strongly recommend you ask us to give you, you know, vote on some guidance to give you, or at least be very specific about it as a body, because otherwise, it is going to be your call.
Okay. Of course, let's realize that we're not, I'm not going to be able to renegotiate any parts of this contract.
I understand.
No, I understand. So, it's going to be an all-or-nothing type deal.
Right. It's an up or down thing.
It's an up or down thing. So, I just want to make sure everybody understands what we're getting at. Now, if the tenor of the council is that you want to come back and talk about this in May at our next council meeting, that's fine. If not, then I'll just go ahead with input that I'm hearing from you, or input that you would give me offline, and see what the total part of it is. But just because you may like one part of it and want to change it, and you may want to change another part, that's not going to happen.
We really, I don't think we, in practice, we can't really give you input off-line.
I was just going to remind, it's very limited.
Okay. Well, anyway, I'm just trying to make this so no, everybody understands what's going on here. I have, you know, so what does the council want to do? I mean, can we get Mr. Rubens? We can have a little, sort of like a straw poll or something, or not, or...
Well, in terms of agendizing an item for the council to actually vote on giving you direction, I think the question's fairly straightforward. Do you want, does the council want to have this on their next agenda to do just that?
Okay.
And if not, then I think the council just provides you the feedback that you're getting tonight, and you do the best you can as a board member with that.
I have a question.
Okay.
So, you're, if we have things that, I'm just going to pick something, like he mentioned, Joe mentioned, regional versus national. And that's not something that we're going to have an argument about, but let's say we did, and we decided as a council, no, Mr. Grisilli, when you go to that board meeting, we want you to stand up for national indices.
Well, it doesn't go that way.
Well, how does it go? What's the point of having it on the agenda if there's nothing...
That's what we're getting at. What's the point of having, because the thing is, go ahead, Joe. Did you want to make...
If I could.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Joe.
So, there's two things. Clearly, this is a very nuanced and complex topic. Certainly, I'd be the first to tell you, I'm out on the front lines trying to communicate it and bring it into everyday speak, and it's challenging. It really is. There's two opportunities to learn more about it in a real deep-dive opportunity. One is Mr. Malpe and his colleagues will be meeting with myself and our team and our consultants on Thursday at 10:30 in the Oak Room in the Seminole Library. And in that meeting, we'll do a deep dive for the city managers and the county manager. We'll have two Malpes there at that meeting. We will also have a second workshop a week from tomorrow, as I mentioned earlier, at the Foster City Rec Center in the Mist Room, from 9:30 to 1:30. That one is an open meeting, and I would encourage you...
For the public, you mean?
Pardon me?
Open to the public?
It's an open meeting. Yeah. Yeah. As the last one was.
But the city manager one is not an open meeting?
The city manager is not an open, thank you.
Yeah. Just want to make sure everybody understands that.
Yeah. So, the next meeting will be with all the legal representatives from each of the member agencies, but we're going to have, we've already got our SPPs from a handful of board members, which are elected officials, and some others, so...
When's that open meeting again?
Pardon me? So, that one is next Tuesday, the 16th, from 9:30 to 1:30. Our consultant will be taking the lead on it. I normally give some opening remarks and...
But you don't have to go and know what's going to happen. That's the meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Olber.
Yes, thank you. If I may, just to respond to a question that Matt asked. In one sense, I would argue that what the council would be voting on, if we were to ask them to come to a vote, is actually pretty straightforward. You are here, Joe, briefing us on a proposed contract.
Right.
Okay? And so, one could see the item being, does the council approve or disapprove, you know, does it want Bob to vote yes or no? Okay? That's it. Now, I admit, deciding what you want to do might be very complicated, but that happens in all of our decisions. That's why, to me, I think it's a fairly straightforward thing to say, and I think for Bob's sake, we ought to do this, because then we all have ownership of it as opposed to just saying, well, that was that Grisilli guy. He just went off and did this, and we're not really sure whether it was the right idea or not.
I just want to make sure that everybody understands, though. You could have input about, like you said, the indices or whatever. That's not going to enter into it. It's a matter of, it's an up or down type vote.
That's...
I mean, it's going to enter into your decision whether, you know, if that's the most important thing, I'm just using an example, most important thing, you'd say, no, I'm not going to vote for it. Okay? Or we shouldn't.
Right.
And you may have another one that you say, well, if you're not going to have that in there, I'm not going to vote for it.
And then there might not be a majority of votes to vote yes.
Exactly. So, that's what I'm just saying, is that's not going to change the contract. So that's what I'm just saying, is that's not going to change the contract. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
Understand.
Okay. So is the, normally, we have three, if three of us want to bring this back to an agendized item, we do that. So are, who wants to bring it back or doesn't?
I would like to bring it back.
Okay, that's one.
I would say I have full confidence in Bob's as our representative and as the chair of the board to make a decision on our behalf. So if others want to discuss it, that's fine with me, but I don't see a need.
Okay. There's still one.
I would, I would ditto what Cameron said. That's exactly what I was thinking.
There's not going to be three, so
Okay, for the record, I'd just like to note that I have every confidence in Bob's ability as well, but this is one of the largest contracts that will affect every resident in San Carlos for the next 15 years. And the idea that the San Carlos elected representatives don't want to take a collective decision on it is disturbing to me.
If I may, Mark, I'm with you, but I don't see the point in having a meeting and all we're telling Bob is up or down, to vote one way or the other. And then that's further diluted by, let's say, we all decided, "No, you know, there's this I don't like, there's that I don't like, so we should vote against it." He goes to a meeting, there's representatives from all these other cities that are a part of it, he's going to be in the minority. So, and I'm frustrated by that, because to me, this is like, it's not taxation without representation, it's fees without representation, because people are getting this service, they're paying a fee for it, and yet they have virtually, even through us, through their elected representatives, they have virtually no say in this. And I agree with you, Joe, it's very, you know, it's slaying the dragon, but at the same time
Well, I think the bigger picture that I see is we have, as Joe mentioned earlier, we have the committee of five that were selected to negotiate. It's just like if, in my mind, and again, maybe I'm being naive, it's just like if we had a subcommittee of two people, you know, talk about something and come to the city council with it. It's the same thing, it's just there's extra layers in there. Those five people have negotiated a contract with Ricollege as best they could, and back and forth for a period of six months, or however long you've, and 10 meetings, or 12 meetings, or how many meetings it's been. And they've come, and this is what their report is, and that reports back to the board. And the board is a representative, it knocks it down, but there's a lot of layers in between, but that's just, it's still a sort of a part of a part of a part of a part. Yes, Mr. Malphey, I'm sorry, Mr. Rubens.
Yeah, I just wanted to procedurally, what you're talking about agendizing for future review would be instructions to our representative at SPWMA. It would not be actually voting on the contract. That would come separately.
Right, just instructions. Okay, so right now, I have none, so we'll move on. There's only two. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I mean, I was going to say, I don't mind having the discussion.
Right.
So if, because it sounds like it only makes two anyway.
You get a choice. You can either have it or not. So you said no, do you have to say yes now? What would you like?
I'm going to say I'm fine with having the discussion.
Okay, so you want a discussion?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Albert wants a discussion. Who else wants a discussion? Do you want a discussion?
Matt, may I respond to something you said?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead. Let's do it. Just put it on the agenda.
All right.
You're going to be as frustrated then as I am now.
Yes, I'll make a quick point. Obviously, we won't be bringing it back, but the contract itself does have to be approved by the city council.
Right.
So what we're talking about here would be the recommended contract that's been negotiated, which comes back to the five of you who actually have to vote on the contract before it goes into effect. And if you don't vote on it, then we would go out and work on getting our own contract.
But Jeff, that also leaves out one other thing, which I was going to respond to what Matt said. He's absolutely right that we could give direction to Bob saying, "Vote no." If enough people in other councils give their representatives the same instruction, then there will be no model contract. We will go back and have to come up with another one. So there is that option.
Correct. Same idea, whereas if enough cities don't approve the model contract, then there's no model contract.
Okay, Joe, last comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I could just say, the governance document that provides structure to this entire conversation is the Joint Powers Authority Agreement. That document very explicitly says in section 7.1.1. C that we need, we need eight, it says two-thirds, but we've translated that into eight positive affirmative votes. If we don't get the eight, we're back to square one, and we need to figure out what we're going to do.
Okay, right.
I have a question for you, Joe.
Go ahead.
Do you feel like you're a captain of a aircraft carrier, perhaps?
There's a lot of stuff going on, a lot of moving parts, yeah.
And Joe, thank you very much for your report.
Thank you very much for your time and your patience on a challenging topic.
And thank you for Ricollege for being here, and we'll all, we'll see you all again in May. Oh, Hillary, too, thank you for being here. All right, let's move on. We've got 10A. Consideration of introducing ordinance, amending sections of the San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 10.32, stopping, standing, and parking. Creating a no overnight parking zone inside the San Carlos Library Parking Garage, and creating additional time limit parking areas on Cherry Street, Chestnut Street, and the San Carlos Library Parking Garage. Mr. Walter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. So tonight's item, as we bring it forward, is to talk about some parking restrictions that we're proposing for ordinance changes that we'll introduce tonight. And they really have to do with a lot of the activity that's been occurring in the city in regards to development. One of the things that we've noticed is that a lot of this construction activity has caused the Caltrain commuters, for the most part, to begin to seek free parking in other places within the city that have currently, or have previously not been taken up by commuting parkers. So we also find that the commuters are willing to walk a lot further for free parking. That's one thing you'll find, is in a daily commute, you have a lot of costs. You have your coffee that you get on the way to the train station, you have your train ticket you've got to buy, and you've got to buy, maybe buy a parking pass. Well, maybe if I can find a free place to park, I don't have to worry, I can still afford the coffee. Anyway, in that regard, we're in a position where we're seeing parking in areas of the city we have not seen before. So to complicate that, around the library and city hall complex, we have now a lack of parking availability for the library tenants and the patrons that are going to the library. The ACC patrons in particular have been impacted by this, as well as city hall staff. And so the places, the number of spaces that we have are just not enough for all of those folks, when you factor in that we have people parking there that are simply walking to the train station. We have evidence of that, too. We have, the sheriff's officers have noticed that, they've actually observed people doing that, so this is not just anecdotal, we think it is. There have actually been observations that this has actually been occurring. We also have evidence that we've had folks that have been parking overnight in the library garage. And these are folks that are presumably parking their car, walking to the train station, perhaps then going to the airport. So those cars stay in the garage for several days, sometimes even a week. And so we felt like we needed to do something about that as well, because it's really not designed for that type of parking. And then one of the things that we decided to do was, in order to be able to be sure that our employees and the library patrons, or the library tenants and the ACC staff has an opportunity to get a parking space, we're going to have an employee parking permit program, where we'll have something that this is, this is to be developed in the next few months. So when the parking ordinance changes are in effect, those employees that need a place to park, that have to move their car during the course of the day, will be able to park back close by and have a permit in their car, so that they won't be subject to citation based on, say, the two-hour other time limit violation. So a couple of pictures for you, and when I went out and took these pictures last week, the Cherry Street side of the library, all the way down to Cedar, was completely parked up. This was probably about 11:00 in the morning. On Chestnut Street, it's a similar situation, where we have those spaces fully parked all the way to San Carlos Avenue. In the library garage, when I wandered back through that way, every space taken up in the library garage. The only space that's available is, you can see it in the forefront of the right-hand picture, and that's one of the electric vehicle charging spaces. We have, we're getting better use of that, but those are really the only spaces that are available anytime after 10 o'clock in the morning. So again, looking at the ordinance changes that we're proposing, we're asking the council to change the ordinance on Cherry Street, to extend the two-hour time limit zone past Elm Street up to Chestnut. And then we're asking that the time limit zone be established on Chestnut Street of four hours. And that was done, and it's different than two, because we had some conversations with our park and rec staff for ACC patrons who come and tend to stay a longer period of time. So we wanted to make sure that they were able to take advantage of a little less pressure on needing to get out and get their car moved. And then in the library garage, after talking with the sheriff's office, based on the library patrons and the times that they would be using it, we're looking at a three-hour time limit, and then we're asking that there be, the ordinance language be established for no overnight parking in the library garage. So again, tonight, we would ask you to introduce the ordinance changes. We'll bring them back at the next council meeting for their adoption, and then they would go into effect after 30 days. And then parking signs and markings will be placed by city maintenance staff upon the, them going into effect. And then we'll, we're targeting a July 1 effective date for all of this, including the employee parking permit program as well. So that's all I've got as far as presentation, and be happy to take any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Albert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jay. A couple of questions in no particular order. How did staff decide not to ask to extend the time limit on, say, Cherry Street all the way up to Cedar? You said you were going to stop it at Chestnut.
So we, in talking with Sergeant Pettit from the sheriff's office, we sort of decided to look at this incrementally, and not extend a lot further than perhaps is necessary. Part of the reason, because we know the construction that's occurring will eventually be completed, and will return to some sort of level of normalcy as far as parking goes. That includes the Caltrain parkers as well. So we felt like, at least for the immediate time, we would just go ahead and take it up to Chestnut Street only.
I see. So presumably, if it ended up being a problem in the interim, we could come back and change it again.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. The next question is about a little bit of a dive into history, before your time, before my time. But when the public parking spaces underneath the library city hall complex were built, were they built in part, and Jeff, maybe you know the answer to this, were they built in part specifically for employee parking?
Yes.
So that was part of the action and resolution and whatnot? Okay, it just was, it was not done in terms of a parking program, it just said, "We're going to allow people to park there." Okay. The reason I ask that is because I initially, that makes me feel better, because I was initially feeling a little funny. It's like, well, we built public parking, and now we're telling, say, one particular class of the public gets to use it for an extended period of time, and nobody else does. But it sounds like it was originally contemplated for that.
That's definitely true. Employee parking.
Because you need to have that someplace. Got it. And then last question is, the, and maybe you already touched on this, will we be negatively, by extending the timed parking limits into these areas where previously they didn't have it on the streets, will we be negatively impacting renters or homeowners on those streets who heretofore may have been parking their vehicles for an extended period of time? You know, like, my son parks his car in front of my house all the time. He's probably there for more than four hours on the average day. Will these rules affect those people, or are they part of the permit program also, where they can say, "No, I live here, so therefore I get to park here for an extended period of time"?
Well, they're not part of the program as we envisioned it going forward, the permit program. But one of the things that we have observed is that there are, there are a large number, almost all the spaces that are available on those streets on a daily basis, not including weekends, of course, but on a daily basis. So what we've seen is that those folks that live on those two streets, or near them, they're off to work and away from the space by the time the parking need and the parking demand comes. So I think we have a kind of a good mix. We're proposing this to be a 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, I believe it is. I can't remember if it is 5:00 or 6:00, but essentially, those folks would be gone to work, and then they would be coming back, and they would have the parking spaces available.
Okay, thank you. I understand the logic, and I'm happy to support what staff is recommending. I just would ask you guys to keep an ear to those kind of problems, and if they develop, I'm not, I want to solve the problem you've identified. I don't necessarily want to mess up the lives of people who are living in a residential area.
Okay. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions, Jay. Is this permanent? I mean, when the parking structure is done at Wheeler Plaza, will these signs go away, or are we just going to leave them?
Well, what we'll do is we'll look at, eventually we're going to need to look at how we want to have the parking in Wheeler Plaza organized. In other words, one example, do we want to put the employee permit program back into spaces at Wheeler Plaza, or do we want to try to find another place for it? So we have yet to make those decisions, but once that's all done, then we'll be factoring in many things about where will people park, where should we, where do we want to encourage them to park? And this ordinance can be changed just as it's being introduced and adopted by council now. So I don't consider it permanent, I consider it to be kind of an interim measure while we have all this activity happening in the city.
All right. And this is somewhat related, but I didn't see anything in there. We had some residents recently who live north of Holly, in, what do they call it, Murphy Tract, east of Old County Road. Is there any ongoing study there? Because it seems to me that with these changes, you're going to have more people, you know, they're going to be looking for places, and I would think that that may be one of the first places that they're going to look. So are we looking at that?
Yes, we're one step ahead of them, because you're absolutely right, they are going to seek out that neighborhood. June 1st, we're going to have a community meeting over there, and we're going to be talking to the folks north of Holly about opting in and petitioning each other, you know, on their blocks for joining into the permit program over there. So we're going to get
I'm sorry, go ahead.
We're going to get them involved in the discussion to see if there's a, you know, a large need, and give them the opportunity, if they feel like it, to go ahead and start that process.
So if there's a consensus, how quickly would you put that in place? Would you put it in place before July 1st?
No, we wouldn't be able to do that, but we'd have the, we'd have to start the, if we had consensus at that meeting that, yes, there's a real need, and we would then send out notifications to all of the homeowners, we would start the petition process, where we would then begin to gather that information in. If it's 50% plus one on a block, then the whole block would become permit parking. So we would start the process. I'm guessing it would probably take us a good three months to get all that done, and then we'd put up signs after that.
Is it going to be block by block?
That would be the opportunity, block by block.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Johnson?
Thanks, thanks, Jay. Is there any other four-hour parking in the city?
There is, but I'm not, I'm not recalling it. Oh, one location, San Carlos Avenue, between Chestnut and Cedar, there's a four-hour, there's four-hour parking on the north side of the block. Not exactly sure why. I think there's some businesses along there, but I think that's the reason.
All right. It just struck me as an odd number. And so it's up, I'm fine if, you know, one other way to potentially do it is make it two-hour parking, but give people who go to the ACC stickers to put on their car or something. But if you guys think this is the best thing, then I'm okay with it.
We thought we'd try it out, and, again, these are things that can change, so it's not permanent, but we felt that would be a good enough time for them.
Okay.
Ms. Grocott?
Couple of questions. You had said at the start that the sheriff's department has noticed people, can you repeat that?
Sure. What the, before we, when this first came up, the idea that we're way overparked around City Hall and the library and all that, one of the things that I got with Sergeant Pettit, and I said, "Hey, you know, we need to start looking at and actually going out in the morning and observing. Who's parking? What time are they showing up? And where are they going? If they're leaving their car, where are they going?"" And that's what the report back was. They actually observed folks who were parking in and around the area around City Hall on the streets with no time restrictions, and even down in the library garage, and walking down, and they would follow that person, and they would go down and then make their way over to the train station and get on the train. So, that was actual observations.
So, maybe this is a silly question, but is there any way we could have some type of program that, you know, I'm thinking a little bit of like what Redwood City does, different, different subject matter, but, you know, they have those signs throughout their neighborhoods about speeding, and it's, you know, like, "You wanna get your picture taken, you know? Go a little bit too fast." You know, they treat it as a joke. I'm thinking of some, you know, some kind of program, even on top of what we're doing, where we, if we're able to follow people like that or note that they're doing that, you know, have some type of thing that, you know, almost shames them and says, "Do you realize what you're doing to, you know?" And just a notice, it's not a citation or anything, but lets them know, you know, "This is the impact you're having, and also, you're the cause for why we're changing these things because you're essentially too cheap to go to the..." Because there are, there's places they can park with the Caltrain system, right, and leave their vehicle all day long.
That's correct.
They just don't wanna pay for it.
That's correct. You know, we, we probably could go down that path, but bottom line is, they're not breaking any law.
Well, I know that, yeah.
And they would not be subject to any kind of citation. So, rather than, we just decided that the easiest way to approach it would be to, you know, again, temporarily extend these areas of time limit parking, and then we'll see how well that works. We believe it's gonna be effective.
Okay. You know, years ago, I don't know how many years ago it was now, I know I was on the council when we did it, but Pacific Hacienda was approved, and there was, you know, deep concern at the time about traffic, parking, you know, which I don't think any of that really, just from that project anyways, came about. But have we ever done a follow-up study of what's going on there in terms of parking? You know, do they have a surplus of parking? Do they have just enough? Do they have people that live there that are part, that are part of this parking impact?
You know, I'm not aware that we've ever done a follow-up study on that. I understand that there is space available in their garages below the buildings.
Okay.
And so...
We've talked to them at times about actually using some of their extra spaces that are under the hacienda.
But they're not part of the problem, which is, okay, that's good news. And then, my last question is, did we, I understand the thing about employee parking, but actually, myself, I bet, there's, you know, one time I was shocked to come into the parking lot, not the garage, but the parking lot, and the two spaces that are right next to the driveway as you're pulling in over at the library, there's two or three spaces there. And for a time, I think it was the police department, the sheriff's department, took those over, and was like, "What?", you know? So, my question is, did we, do you think we've looked hard enough at, you know, we've got the garage under City Hall, right? And there's, you know, spaces for some of the employees there, as well as, you know, there's a lot of police vehicles there, both motorcycles, extra cars, that, any way we could possibly tighten that up so that we relieve some of this pressure?
So, we did, we did look at that, and we believe we've got three spaces down in the garage below City Hall that we could potentially utilize for, say, some city staff that, instead of having to park in the library garage, they could park down underneath. So, we feel like we've got three spaces that we can potentially use. The other thing is the library surface lot. We're gonna put, make that off-limits to employees with permits because we wanna make sure that that's as much available for library patrons and City Hall patrons as possible. So, we have had some instances where we've had employees that have parked up in that lot, and for whatever reason, it was, it was not being actively enforced as it might be. And so, that's gonna be one of the restrictions we put on it, is there'll be no employees allowed in that particular lot.
And is that lot, one more question regarding other vehicles, city-related. At one time, when we had the fire department, our own fire department shared with Belmont, they had some of their vehicles down there. Is that still going on with, now that we are contracted with the Redwood City? Yeah, the BAT chiefs and so forth had some trucks down there.
Oh, so, well, one of the spaces in this garage you're talking about?
No, in the library garage?
No.
No. Okay. So, that's not being done anymore?
And in fact, we actually are, one of the spaces that we're, one of the three spaces in the garage below is the fire chief's space. And so, it's one which we're gonna open up to other employees because it's very rare that he's ever in it.
Yeah. Okay. And then, the, so, remind me then, so the garage is gonna be, how many hours?
The library garage, we, three hours.
Three hours. And then, the parking lot up, the surface lot is how many hours?
Still, it'll stay two hours. That's currently two hours, and so, we decided not to change that one. Felt like we could just leave that one alone, but keep employees out of it, and that will be for patrons of the library.
But we might, so we could consider in the future, maybe even knocking that down. Do we have any, we have spaces that are an hour, right?
Actually, I'm...
Any of those?
No, I don't believe we do. I think our, I think primarily our minimum time limit is two-hour, but we have some that are 20-minute, that are, you know, one or two spaces here and there that are high-turnover type spaces around the downtown.
Okay. It's not really a question, but, you know, a comment might be to, if we did some monitoring of the surface lot and see how long people are staying there for, because it seems to me there should be a differential between the garage where somebody might, if they wanna go to the library and go for a long time, they would park there. But the surface lot, at least, I don't know, the rest of the council might have a different opinion on this, but, you know, high turnover, where people are going to the library, getting a book, doing whatever, checking on their kid, and then they're leaving, as opposed to sitting there for two hours.
Right. And I think we'll, we'll take a look at that. One thing, from where my office is looking at that, at that parking lot, it is a very high turnover, lots of activity. And so, there's lots of folks circulating in and out of that lot, trying to find spaces. And so, it's, it's very well-used.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this?
Chair over there.
If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to introduce ordinance number...
1520.
1520, an ordinance of the city council of the city of San Carlos, amending sections of the San Carlos municipal code, chapter 10.32, stopping standing and parking, creating a no overnight parking zone inside the San Carlos library parking garage, and creating additional time limit parking areas on Cherry Street, Chestnut Street, and the San Carlos library parking garage.
Second. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Did I miss, did I overspoke? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on this item? All right. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
America Sully?
Yes. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to note that I was very impressed that Jay knew precisely where the four-hour parking was in San Carlos. I think we should have a new, a new contest where we try and stump Jay.
Stump Jay. Okay. Okay. I'll have to work on that one. Number 11, council communications and announcements. Mr. Albert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of items. One is, I think, as is making its way out into the public awareness, the EIR process for the high-speed rail system on the peninsula is moving forward pretty rapidly. There is now a serious opportunity being considered or evaluated as part of that process where there would potentially be four passing tracks, pardon me, four tracks total, two additional passing tracks being built through San Carlos, actually from San Mateo down to Redwood City. This could potentially have a very significant impact on our community. There are some of the plans that talk for the, that mention the facility might be as much as 30 or 40 feet above the height of the current berm, and that doesn't even include the electrical catenary system to feed the electric trains. Long story short, it occurred to me that, given this affects four different communities along that right-of-way, I think, I wonder whether the council ought to consider appointing a subcommittee of council members who could coordinate with presumably subcommittees from those other communities as well, just to share information and whatnot. Obviously, it's not a decision-making body. It's just an information-sharing forum. So, I'd like to ask whether or not my colleagues think that's something we ought to bring back to appoint somebody to.
I wouldn't have a problem with that. I think we should bring it back to an agenda item so that we can talk about that.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
All right.
And then, the second item is something that piqued my interest when I saw it on, of all places, Nextdoor. And it has to do with the issue of abating the impact of lead paint on houses when houses are being repainted. And what I didn't understand until I looked into this is that there's a pretty good chance that any home in San Carlos that was built before, I think the figure I heard was the late 1970s, 1978, has some lead paint in it. And that means that if you're sanding it and you're creating dust clouds, you're actually discharging lead into the environment. The state of California actually has some rules about how that's supposed to be done, and contractors and painters are supposed to be trained in how to protect themselves and other members of the community. From what I've heard, it's not always clear that that's very well-enforced. Now, the practical reality is that these types of enforcement mechanisms in our city are done on a complaint basis, or when somebody notices something, we don't hire people to go out and survey every painting job in town. So, I'd just like to make this announcement that, for the benefit of the public, is that if you see some painting being done or preparation for painting that's generating dust, and you have a concern, make sure you contact the city because there is a process to go through, and you could be doing yourself a significant benefit by doing it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Bob. Just a couple of things, and thanks to Mark for going to that Caltrain meeting last month. That was a pretty important meeting. And as a result of all these recent developments with Caltrain and high-speed rail, I'm gonna go to my first Caltrain board meeting on the 1st over at Samtrans building. I think I need to pay a little bit, I think we all need to pay a little bit closer attention to what's going on. I don't have really anything, anything else except to invite everyone to attend, if you can, this Thursday's heart benefit for teacher housing. It's gonna be at Devil's Canyon at five, from 5:30 to 7:30, and it's gonna, it's specifically a benefit to create more affordable housing for teachers in San Mateo County.
All right. Mr. Johnson?
The only thing I wanted to bring up is I've been stress-testing the Wheeler lot and the Samtrans lot whenever I get a chance. I feel like we've made some progress, but we've still got a ways to go. I saw that a new sign went up in the alleyway over the weekend that directs people to the Samtrans lot. That's pretty good. However, when you drive into the Samtrans lot, the signage is, doesn't make a lot of sense. It says, "You can't park where the Samtrans people are," and then you drive up the ramp, and there's a different sign that tells you something else. I've gotten feedback from a number of members of the community that they don't feel when they can and can't park in Samtrans, and as a result, some people have circled around a few times and then left because they were worried about getting a ticket because it wasn't clear what they were supposed to do. And then, at the Wheeler side, I just, I still don't really feel like we're getting what we were promised. The main thing is that, one of the clear things that was spelled out in a lot of the presentations was that when the Wheeler lot was filled, a sign would go up saying that the lot was full, and there would be a person standing there directing people to the Samtrans lot. I see all the time the Samtrans lot full, no sign, no one directing anyone to do anything. So, I, just given how important this is right now, and that we're kind of all collectively going up the learning curve, and that we've been sending out notices, I really would like us to get that last 10% done. So, Al's not here, but I guess maybe I'll talk to Jay and to Jeff, and I just, we're close, but, you know, I was at the farmer's market this weekend, the Samtrans was completely empty, even though, you know, it was a great place to park, and Wheeler was totally full, and no one knew where to go. So, I hope we can improve things a little bit. So, thanks.
All right. Mr. Grokot?
The only thing I have to report on is just an observation through email. Ever since I brought up the idea that we don't enforce the vehicle registration tags on the license plates, it seems like we've done just the opposite in terms of enforcing more license plate violations and so forth, license plates that are allegedly mutilated or whatever. And so, I've seen an uptick, and I was gonna pass off to the mayor because he said he was gonna talk to the chief.
And I did.
Yeah.
And I'm sorry. I did talk to the chief. I should've called you directly. I didn't. I'm sorry, did you have any other comments besides?
Yes.
Okay. I did talk to the chief, and he indicated that that's the law. And so, we're not gonna, it'd be awfully hard to say, "Don't look at this and don't look at that" to his officers. It's part of the code, it's part of the law, and so, that's basically what's gonna happen.
Through the chair?
Yes.
The, I mentioned for everybody's benefit, because I've talked to the chief pretty extensively about that, too. There was a news report on, I think it was K-Ron the other day, Channel 4, where they were talking about this in some depth. It turns out it's not a problem just for our community. There's apparently a growing number of people who are following instructions from the internet on how to deface their license plates in such a way that they defeat the toll booth readers.
Right.
And to the human eye, it's like, "Hey, I can still read it, but the machines can't." And that, that is driving, you know, the cheapness of a few individuals is driving the enforcement against a whole bunch of other people, which is unfortunate.
Yeah. Good point.